Board President Norwood, welcome to the meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and your participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for Open Meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style board meetings online or either Zoom or YouTube or in-person inside of our boardroom being hosted at Randall World Languages School. Public comments can be made while you're logged in on Zoom or if you're in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option.
We know your voice carries.
If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see instructions for public comment on your screen. Our communication specialist will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called upon. You fill out one of these instruction cards. There are copies available on the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communications specialist Scott Forstner will take it from here.
Thank you so much, Board President Norwood, and apologies for a little technical difficulty there. So yes, for those of our audience members that are here at Randall Elementary, there are green speaker cards at the back of the room. If you'd like to make a public comment, just fill those out, hand them to me at any point in the meeting, and I will pass those along to the board president. For our online audience, you need to be on the Zoom platform. YouTube is a listen-only device, so you would register on Zoom. You will see a hand icon by your name to indicate your request that you'd like to make a public comment. We will call names in the order they are received. Just please wait till we call it on. Listen for your name. Once you hear your name, we will tell you that your audio has been activated. You'll take yourself off mute, and you'll have two minutes to make your public comment. We just ask that you please be patient. President Norwood will call on any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and Point 3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do provide special accommodations for our board meetings. If you do have a special accommodation, we ask that you please contact the superintendent's office at least two business days in advance, and we'll see what we can do. Our meetings are broadcast live on both Zoom and YouTube, and they are recorded. Those recordings are posted on our website, www.musd.org. Closed captioning is available on the Zoom platform. Click the closed captioning icon, and the live transcription will appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that were not part of the agenda, those are public records and available upon request. Back to you, President Norwood.
Thank you, Scott. Closed session announcements.
In closed session, the board unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation to accept the resignation of a certified manager. The effective date will be June 30, 2023, with a four-to-zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Naka. Before we review and approve the open session, we'd like to do a roll call for the student board reps.
Yes, I believe we have them online this evening. Nikita Sharma, our student board rep from Milpitas High School, did email me earlier. She's feeling under the weather and is not able to be here this evening. But we do have a roll call for student board rep Bakhta.
Here.
And student board rep Rocha.
Here.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for being here. At this time, we'd like to review and approve the open session agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries. At this time, it's time for the flag salute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kereh Pramaya, and today I am being accompanied...
You gotta start over, man. Come on, come on, you ready?
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kereh Pramaya, and I am being accompanied by my... by Kerechio. Please rise with us for the flag salute. Remove all hats and hoods, and place your right hands over your hearts. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You may be seated.
Good job. Thank you. We are now on item 10 on our agenda, and that are comments from the public. Scott, are there any online comments from the public?
We have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, and I have one speaker board card here from Justin Balatico from NJROTC.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Justin Ray Balatico. I am the commanding officer of the NJROTC program at the Milpitas High School. On the behalf of the program, we would like to invite you to the... we would like to invite the school board and the community to attend the... attend the this year's annual military inspection for the year of 2023. The cadets have worked hard throughout the year to complete the requirements set by the Navy and deserve to be recognized by the community. This event will occur on March 22, 2023, from 10:30 to 11:30 at the San Jose Community College Extension near the Milpitas High School. We hope to see the community and the school board there again this year to show their support for the program. Thank you. Have a great day, and we hope to see you there on March 22 from 10:30 to 11:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, can we make sure that all the board members, and put an announcement out for the community for the ceremony for the NJROTC?
Awesome. Thank you. Scott, are there any comments online at this time?
We had no other hands raised.
Awesome. We're on item 11, MUSD strategic goals. This time, we will go with the board this time. And also, we probably won't have our school board reps, but we'll just go with the board this time. So starting with you, board member, no.
Sure. Build a culture that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication system for better outreach to parents, students, and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers.
Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. And we'll have the superintendent do the final one.
Identify creative strategic student-focused strategies for building healthy learning environments.
Thank you. Item 12 on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Norwood. I would first like to recognize a team of students from Milpitas High School who participated in the NAF Challenge for Creative Applications of Software Products, and they created a s...
As an unagendized item, no response is required from the Board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the Board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the Board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the Board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do provide special accommodations for our board meetings. If you do have a special accommodation, we ask that you please contact the superintendent's office at least two business days in advance, and we'll see what we can do. Our meetings are broadcast live on both Zoom and YouTube, and they are recorded. Those recordings are posted on our website, www.musd.org. Closed captioning is available on the Zoom platform. Click the closed captioning icon, and the live transcription will appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that were not part of the agenda, those are public records and available upon request. Back to you, President Norwood.
Thank you, Scott. Closed session announcements.
In closed session, the Board unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation to accept the resignation of a certified manager. The effective date will be June 30, 2023, with a four-to-zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Naka. Before we review and approve the open session, we'd like to do a roll call for the student board reps.
Yes, I believe we have them online this evening. Nikita Sharma, our student board rep from Mel Peters High School, did email me earlier. She's feeling under the weather and is not able to be here this evening. But we do have a roll call for Student Board Rep Bhakta.
Here.
And Student Board Rep Rocha.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. At this time, we'd like to review and approve the open session agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries. At this time, it's time for the flag salute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kereh Primeya, and today I am being accompanied...
You gotta start over, man. Come on, come on, you're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kereh Primeya, and I'm being accompanied by my... by Kerechio. Please rise with us for the flag salute. Remove all hats and hoods, and place your right hands over your hearts. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You may be seated.
Good job. Thank you. We are now on Item 10 on our agenda, and that are comments from the public. Scott, are there any online comments from the public?
We have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, and I have one speaker board card here from Justin Balatiko from NJROTC.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Justin Ray Balatiko. I am the commanding officer of the NJROTC program at the Mel Peters High School. On the behalf of the program, we would like to invite you to the... we would like to invite the school board and the community to attend the... attend the this year's annual military inspection for the year of 2023. The cadets have worked hard throughout the year to complete the requirements set by the Navy and deserve to be recognized by the community. This event will occur on March 22, 2023, from 10:30 to 11:30 at the San Jose Community College Extension near the Mel Peters High School. We hope to see the community and the school board there again this year to show their support for the program. Thank you. Have a great day, and we hope to see you there on March 22 from 10:30 to 11:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, can we make sure that all the board members and put an announcement out for the community for the ceremony for the NJROTC?
Awesome. Thank you. Scott, are there any comments online at this time?
We had no other hands raised.
Awesome. We're on Item 11, MUSD Strategic Goals. This time, we will go with the Board this time. And also, we probably won't have our school board reps, but we'll just go with the Board this time. So starting with you, Board Member, no.
Sure. Build a culture that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication system for better outreach to parents, students, and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers.
Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. We'll have the superintendent do the final one.
Identify creative strategic student-focused strategies for building healthy learning environments.
Thank you. Item 12 on the agenda, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Norwood. I would first like to recognize a team of students from Mel Peters High School who participated in the NAF Challenge for Creative Applications of Software Products, and they created a software product called Azilia, which provides students with opportunities for diving deeper into those issues that cause them stress, or anxiety, or other issues with mental health and wellness. And they won. They won $2,500 in the contest, and they've been invited by our president of the Parent Teacher Association of Russell Middle School to demonstrate and/or talk about their work that they did with families and students. So I'd like to recognize them and bring them up for tonight. And those people are Tram An Nguyen, Tiffany Hyde, Lauren Lay, and Jason Rojas Pacheco. If you could come up?
If you'd like to say a few words?
I would just like to thank our MHS Technology Teacher, Mrs. Hutchinson, for giving us the opportunity to be able to succeed and win this program. And we'd also like to mention how the academy that we participated in, the Digital Business Academy at MHS, was able to encourage us and, again, provide us with the opportunity to achieve.
Thank you very much. Did either of the other two members of your team want to say anything?
Just another thanks to the Digital Business Academy, especially the lead teacher, Ms. Hutchinson, Ms. Hutchinson, for providing us with this opportunity and her full support on the project. Thank you.
And are you Lauren or Tiffany?
I'm Lauren.
Okay, so Tiffany, would you like to say a few words about the project?
Tiffany is currently not with us.
Oh, so this is Tram. Tram An then.
I don't have any words.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate you sharing your expertise in the work that you did and also for giving a shout-out about the Digital Business Academy, which is a great example of our strategic goal number three, which is to build pathways for our learners so you can find purpose in your next step after high school. So really excited to see you on Friday, hopefully, at the Russell Family Wellness, which will be from 2:45 to 7:00 for anybody who would like to come. And I'd like to invite you up to have pictures with the Board and the cabinet, and then we'll have your family come up as well, if they're here. And I don't see Ms. Hutchinson, but if there are any other teachers. So you said Lauren is not here? Could somebody... Tiffany's not here. So could somebody get Tiffany first? And then your Tram An, Lauren, and we have... There we go. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, guys, let's squeeze a big kind of center here. Okay. We get the families up and the...
All right. Next, we would like to recognize Mr. John Torres, who recently retired from the Mel Peters Police Department, where he served for 35 years, and his last position held was the Assistant Chief of Police. Not only that, but Mr. Torres has a very important claim to fame, which is he is the class of Mel Peters High School 1989. So we'd like for you to come up. And would you like to say a few words? Are you sure?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. Totally unnecessary, but greatly appreciated. My last few years at the police department, I was a captain overseeing the Special Operations Division, and that included our police community relations unit and our school resource officers. And then as the Assistant Chief of Police, I got to work a lot with the different schools, with the community engagement events, and with the school board as well. And the relationship between the school district and the police department for the time that I had been at the police department is amazing, and that's in large part to the people back there and to the people up here and at the staff at all the different schools. So thank you.
Thank you. Then Chief and the rest of our wonderful staff members in blue, if you would please come up as well. Thank you very much. And Chief, would you like to say a few words about... yeah.
I think John summed it up pretty well. The police department has had a very long-lasting relationship with the school district. The first formal program was in 1972. It was surrounding traffic safety, and it's continued. We are 50-something years later, and so we're just very, very appreciative of the relationships that we have. And in a place where, across the nation, school districts and law enforcement were severing relationships, that wasn't the case here. And I think that we're definitely appreciative of that, and I think that all of us collectively see the value in working together. A lot of us, John, myself, and I think John and I, before we retired, counted about 25 other people that are currently employed in the Mel Peters Police Department that are from this community. So just very, very appreciative of all you folks, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And now we'd like to recognize our two school resource officers, Mr. John Mock, Officer John Mock, as well as Officer Mustafa Asefi. Would each of you like to say a few words?
I'll give it to Asefi. He's here another year, so. As far as the SROs, we want to thank you guys and thank the school district for working with us. We couldn't do it without the staff there. They've given us support since day one. All been open doors, so working with them has been really nice. I want to thank John and Sergeant Speckenhauer because they took me as their SRO, so they're training me to take over when John leaves. And special thanks to John because he's worked with me every day. He's taught me the ins and outs of the school. So I appreciate everyone. I appreciate you guys recognizing us, and we thank you. I mean, the support is great, and that's all we need to do our job, so thank you so much.
SRO means School Resource Officer. SRO stands for School Resource Officer.
And in our community, our school resource officers are a part of the staff. They get to know our students as individuals, build relationships and rapport. And with Officer Mock, for example, that paid off twice in saving student lives. So it's an essential part of who we are as a community. Thank you. Chief, did you have anything to say about the School Resource Officer Program or the police community?
I know. Everybody's already said all the good stuff, though. Like, what else can I say? No, the School Resource Officer Program is extremely important, and the work that these folks do every day, I know the superintendent had mentioned John saving a couple people's lives, and it's very, very true. And they go to work every single day with the kids in mind. Some people refer to school resource programs as cops on campus. We don't. We emphasize the word "resource" because we work together in making sure that our students are provided the support that they need. That's why you don't see them walking around looking for kids doing things wrong. They're walking around campus looking for kids that we can build relationships with. And that's why Asefi's out there playing basketball and soccer, you know, during break time, is to befriend them and make sure that they understand that if there's something happening in their lives and they need help, that we're there for them all the time. So very, very important program.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. Okay, next, I would like to recognize our Knights of Columbus with former school board member, Guan Alex Santosas, Alex Santos, as well as Ocean Supermarket with the Quatch family. Together, they, every year, raise funds for our students and the special needs class that serves to support those students with greatest needs and learning how to find their way just with the essentials of how to live a daily life. We call it our post-secondary program, as well as our community-based instruction program. And every year, together, you help to support this program because of your fundraising, as well as your support of grants that we've received. We're able to provide our students with life skill labs and parts of the furniture that is required for that. So we greatly appreciate you, and appreciate receiving this year a check of $9,285.16, I think it is? And if you would come up and take a picture?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I have a few words.
You'll have a few words, of course.
Motion. All right. Oh, yes. Yeah, okay. I got it, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening. So tonight, the Knights of Columbus, St. Elizabeth Council 8747, presenting a donation check in the amount of $9,285.16 to Mel Peters Unified School District for Special Education Program at Mel Peters High School. We would like to express our gratitude for the generosity and support of our members and donors, families and friends, Father Andy Sealy God and Father Jung Nguyen and St. Elizabeth Parish Community, Mel Peters Unified School District Board Member, Superintendent and Staff, teachers, student volunteers, and parents. Thanks to Ocean Supermarket for consistent and strong support year after year. We have been very successful because we all work together. St. Sarre, Knights of Columbus, St. Elizabeth Council 8747, Manuel Malabert, Grandite, Guillermo Oribé, Trustee, and myself, Trustee and Chairman of PWID Program. So I have also our presentation here. So the first one is for Ocean Supermarket. Thank you. And we have Mr. Mintanquac here, representing Ocean Supermarket. Thank you for all of your strong support. And we also have another one here. This is very special because year after year, I've been working with Mr. Mintanquac, and he helped us, and not only he provided the support, but he also is also doing the work, setting up the hood and everything. So we really appreciate it. I mean, you know, everything that you, you know, you have done, and your families and, you know, employees, everybody, you know, in the company has really made the difference. And this year's, you know, donation really shows, you know, how well we work together. Okay? So here's one for you. All right. And, oh, yeah. And also, before I forget, also, don't forget the grant application because there is another one this year. Excellent. Thank you. I want to make sure.
Thank you. Next, I would like to recognize Mary Jude Dorpinghouse. She is AXA, which is the Association of California School Administrators. She is the AXA Association of California School Administrators. Class... I'm sorry. Student Services Administrator of the Year and Region Eight, represents all of Santa Clara County. And this is your third year with us. Her third year with us, and she has really worked diligently to provide all of our staff members with support and understanding all of the guidelines and being able to provide the most effective services for our learners and also to be partners with our parents. And you've really... she went through every single student's individual education... She went through every single student's individual education plan in the district, so that is close to 1,000. And she reviewed everyone to make sure our students were receiving the services that they needed. That's just an example of the dedication that you have to assuring that every learner gets what he or she needs. So I appreciate you. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. You know, it's nice to receive something like this, but you can't do it without a team. And so I just am very grateful for all the wonderful staff members that we work with and our families that we work with because together we're able to support our students and get them what they do need, as you had mentioned. So really, I'm just one person and part of a bigger, broader team that works together on behalf of students, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Executive Director. We have another AXA Region Eight winner. This is for the Adult School Leader in the county, and that's Ms. Juliana Brahim, who is our Principal of Milpitas Adult Education, both for those who would like to better their lives, change their job skills with the rest of us, as well as those of us, our learners, who are in correctional facilities. And she works with them as well. She started with us in Milpitas as a teacher and then became a coordinator and has been our principal for the last five years. And we greatly appreciate you for the work that you do and also for representing us at the state level. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. At AXA, they always remind us that AXA started at adult education, so I'm very proud of that. And I started with AXA, I believe, in 2010. And I was part of the Prodigy Program, which means that they mentored me for several years while I was not an administrator. And I had the opportunity to work with many beautiful people and engage in very wonderful experiences that created a strong network. And I am just so happy to receive this award on behalf of all adults there. Thank you.
And then, next, we have another Regional Eight winner in our district, and that is our Manager of Contracts and Construction and anything else that we need, including COVID tests and all kinds of things. And that is Kelly Ng. And Kelly actually graduated from Milpitas Unified School District and came to us in the business office as a student intern. So we are especially grateful for the work that you do and for always being there to say yes. One of the prime examples of the dedication of Ms. Ng is right-- it was during the year of online learning, so the first year, full year of COVID. And right before the winter break, we were given the opportunity to distribute food to those in need. And we literally only had four days to get organized. And so I called Kelly and she helped me to get everything that we needed, people, volunteers, a system in place, so that we could pass out food to over 2,000 families in Milpitas. And that's just one example of how Kelly strives to do whatever it is that our learners and community need. And for that, I'm so grateful that AXA is recognizing you for this award.
Thank you so much. I am very honored and blessed that I was nominated and awarded this award. And I'm just so happy that I can continue to help our community since I grew up here and this is my home. And I'm so happy that I could bring, move it, bring it forward.
So if we could have a picture with our three awardees?
So, Superintendent Jordan, we can't let you go. As far as another winner of AXA's Region Eight, Superintendent of the Year. Amazing accomplishment amongst, you know, all of us in this particular region in Santa Clara County. Your leadership has been amazing in regards to creating a special learning environment that we have here in Milpitas. We talked about it earlier, even on a call with Senator Cortez in the sense of, as soon as Superintendent Jordan joined, they all knew who she was and they were ready because she's a great thought partner. And you always have the students at the core of everything we've done here in the district, and we're blessed and lucky to have you.
Just a few. As my colleagues have shared, nobody could do anything alone. It takes a team. And so I'll accept this as a reflection of the wonderful, beautiful team that we have that makes up Milpitas Unified School District. And that includes the Governance and Cabinet Team here, as well as our Principals, Teachers, Managers and Classified Employees and each of our parents and community members and our Police Department. Everybody in Milpitas is a part of our team. And that's why our strategic goal number one is to build a culture of "we," and that's how we roll.
So in case this is your first board meeting, this is a tradition that we've had for the last several years where with all the things that are going on in the world, the one thing that we do first at every one of our board meetings is we celebrate our community. We celebrate our staff, we celebrate our kids, and we want them to be recognized. We want them to know that in the midst of everything that's going on or what they may see in social media or on the news, a negative, that we continue to promote education, we continue to promote community, we continue to promote positive things. And as you can see, with Milpitas Unified School District had four AXA Award winners for our region. And we are very grateful for them and their effort and the time and the commitment that they put in the Milpitas Unified School District. So thank you for that, and let us continue on with our agenda.
So now I have the Superintendent's State of the District update. As you can see, COVID is still a presence in our county. And since our last update, we have 47 additional student cases and seven additional staff cases. And thanks to Ms. Ng, we have passed out over 27,000 additional COVID test kits since two weeks ago. And now, when you receive those COVID test kits, where originally it was meant to be used only for our students and staff, the state has now granted us permission to allow all of our staff-- excuse me, all of our families to use them for themselves as well. And today, the county medical officer informed superintendents that there is a slight change in the protocols for testing. Now, if you feel that you have been exposed to another person who has COVID, you've recently traveled, or you've been in a very large congregation of people, those would be opportunities for you to test. Another additional piece that has changed is that for students, they only need to-- students who have COVID, they only need to remain away from others for five days. And Cal OSHA is still maintaining 10 days for employees. Then, the next step is, I want to point out how important it is for us to stay up to date on our vaccines. This graphic here demonstrates that for those who have the recent bivalent vaccine, that they are three times less likely to die. And, excuse me, those who have had their full primary vaccines are three times less likely to die. And those who have received the full bivalent and primary compared to those who have never received a COVID, they're 14 times less likely to die. So it's very important that we assure at least that our children and youth have the vaccine. And you can see here that for the primary series vaccine, that as a county, did pretty well. And for the bivalent booster, however, there's still great room for growth. Our youth ages 12 to 17, only 24% have been vaccinated with the bivalent. That's the most recent vaccine. And 20% of children ages 5 to 11. So Milpitas Unified will have another vaccination clinic this spring. Next, I would like to remind everybody that we are in the midst of our cost management budget priorities discussions for March. We have a virtual discussion tomorrow evening at 7:00 and then an in-person on the 21st at 5:00 p.m. at the San Jose Extension for, on Escola Parkway. And then also, we've launched our Thought Exchange, which is in two parts. So if you were to either go to TE, which stands for Thought Exchange Join.com, and then put in this code, you would get Goal One, which is what are our budget priorities for MUSD students to receive standards-based instruction curriculum and highly qualified teachers in a safe environment. And then our other two goals for budget priority are around thriving students academically, socially, emotionally, as well as student district and families working together as partners. And you can log in and provide your own thoughts, as well as star those thoughts of others. So even if you've already submitted yours, you can go back and rate others. So just to give you an example of what it looks like, here we can see that with Goal Number One, we have had 504 participants who shared 318 unique thoughts and then together rated over 6,765 times. And you can see that, to date, these are the areas that have bubbled up under this budget priority area of instruction assessments by qualified teachers in a safe environment. So this is your opportunity from now until the end of March to please provide your input as well. And we are, continue to send that out by parent square, as well as by email and social media. Thank you, Executive Director Johari. And that concludes the State of the District for tonight.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Report.
I would like to begin with our Principal of Matos, Principal Jackie Vo Felbinger. And she has with her some staff members and parents, and I think a couple students.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jackie Vo Felbinger, Principal of Matos Elementary. Thank you for inviting Matos to share our work tonight. We will highlight our weekly community assembly called the Matos Meetup. Matos Meetup supports the MUSD's strategic goals, culture of "we," communication systems, and social emotional gains. It is my pleasure to introduce our very special representatives tonight, Ms. Natalie Theis, 3rd grade Learning Community Teacher, Alice Oh, 3rd grade student, and Misun Yu, Mother of Alice, School Site Council Member, PTA Hospitality Co-Chair, and MUSD substitute in seven different positions.
Hello, everyone. My name is Natalie Theis, and I am a 3rd grade teacher at Matos Elementary. Since the opening of Matos Elementary School, we have held what we call Matos Meetup. Matos Meetup is a weekly assembly with students, staff and families. Each week, a different class. At Matos, we refer to a class as a base. Each base represents and teaches their themed base virtue. For example, I am a part of enthusiasm base. This means that our base taught the school what enthusiasm means, how they can display enthusiasm, why it's important, and they performed a dance to a song that embodies enthusiasm. Other virtues that have been presented include generosity, determination, courage, and many more. Although having weekly presentations and performances from each base is already exciting, what is most important about Matos Meetup is that we get to celebrate and recognize students who have displayed each virtue with weekly virtue awards. Through this weekly PBIS celebration, we come together to showcase positive actions that we see in our students and promote the importance of being socially and emotionally aware of our actions within our Matos community and beyond. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alice. I'm in 3rd grade at Mabel Matos Elementary School. I love Matos Meetup because of two reasons. First, we can learn the different virtues with each base's presentation and performance. It's so fun, and I'm happy to learn the valuable virtues in a fun way, not just from books. Second, while we prepare for the performance, I can learn to respect each other, be confident, and work together as a team. Every week, it's so exciting to see who gets the award. That's my favorite part of Matos Meetup and my best memory. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Misun, and I'm happy to be here to represent Mabel Matos Elementary School. As Dr. Vo Felbinger interests me, I have several jobs in Matos. I'm very happy to-- I really, really love Matos Meetup because I can see how our kids model their virtue and how happy they are when they get the award. And I strongly believe that each week's virtue learning will be the great foundation of their life. And another biggest joy is to see their performance. When they perform, I can see their strong bonding and fantastic teamwork. And of course, it's from all teachers' great effort, yeah, to make it happen. And another thing is, it's a great opportunity to engage with the whole Matos community. Our PTA work hard to raise money for outdoor stage, and it's great to have all in her school at once. How amazing it is. Having seven soft-titied jobs in Matos already proved how much I love this Matos community. Thank you so much.
We hope you can sense our enthusiasm for Matos Meetup, and thank you very much for inviting us here tonight to share about that. Thank you. Have a good night.
And the Matos Meetup is open to any board member, right? All right. Terrific. Thank you. Every Wednesday at 12:30. And next, I would like to ask our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Wendy John, for her update.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. This past Wednesday, we had our Parcel Tax Oversight Committee meeting. The current Parcel Tax Measure C will expire on June 30th this year. I would like to thank our community members, Nick Connors, Rafina Moreno, Angie Yuan, William Lamb and Tom Valori for their time and dedication serving on the current committee. Now that the voters in the city of Milpitas passed the Parcel Tax Renewal Measure E last year, we're currently seeking community members to serve on the Measure E Oversight Committee. The ad has been posted in the Milpitas Post, district's website and the social media. The application deadline is May 1st this year. So I'm excited that the community just passed-- So I'm excited that the community just passed this Parcel Tax, and I'm excited for the continued work with the community. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. And I'll go next to our Executive Directors of Learning and Development, Priti Jahari and Mary J. Dorpinghaus.
Good evening. On Friday, Superintendent Jordan, along with myself and 10 district leaders, teachers, and special assignment association leaders gathered at the County Office of Ed as part of our work with our California's differentiated assistance. We viewed, reviewed potential root causes, worked on developing an aim goal, and all focused on improving academic performance and attendance, chronic absenteeism for our students with disabilities. Our team will continue to work together over the coming weeks and reconvene in April with the County Office of Ed as we further our work in improving the outcomes for our students with disabilities. And I'll turn it over to Director Jahari.
Thank you. Good evening. The planning for April Acceleration Academy is underway. It's one of our ELOP programs. This will be our second year of implementation. We're expanding from three grade levels to seven grade levels, so serving the full spectrum from TK to six. The program will be housed at Randall this April break. We already have nine wonderful MUSD teachers signed up to teach, and the program will be led by our TOSA, Raul Patino. Each grade level will engage in a STEAM project-based learning unit ranging from shrinking our footprint to species survival. All of the students will also have hands-on experience designing and building models of working electrical circuits through their specialty class. Through this program, we plan to serve 175 students.
Thank you very much. And next, we have our Assistant Superintendent of Human Relations and also our Director of Human Relations, Mr. Damon James. Will you be giving the report or will Mr. Brunson be giving the report?
He's hoping I will right now. We can tag team it, Damon. You can talk about the recruitment fair and the success of that on Saturday for special ed. But I want to thank you, Superintendent Jordan Trustees. We are, I'm still on the mend from my knee surgery, so I wish I could be there in person a lot to celebrate this evening, especially with Women's History Month and all the women that we're seeing being recognized for their leadership. I'm excited to say that we did conclude negotiations with CSCA and their wonderful team led by Suzette Braumagen, and all the articles that we sunshine. It took us about five months, but it was good work, and we feel very good about what we put together as a united front from the Board's direction, the district leadership team, and CSCA. And then Damon, why don't you talk about?
On Saturday, we had our Special Education Recruitment Fair for both certificated and classified staff. We had a nice turnout of candidates and a great team of support, our CSCA President and Vice Presidents, as well as several administrators. So we're looking to continue that hiring process. And our next huge recruitment fair is the Santa Clara Office of Education. So if you have or know of any certificated staff members or candidates that are interested, send them my contact information.
Thank you both. And so certificated is people who are interested in being a teacher or a specialist. And that concludes our Executive Cabinet Reports.
Thank you, Superintendent and Executive Cabinet, for your report. Thank you, Principal Jackie Vo Felbinger and Matos Team for sharing your words, and I'm sure that you will see a board member show up at a Matos Meetup sooner than later. With that said, we'll move on to the next item, Board Group Agreements. The Board Group Agreements are provided for the Board's ready reference. As a reminder of our conduct as elected officials, per Board, per Board Bylaw 9001, we adopted at the December 13, 2022 meeting, Board members and the Superintendent agree to, and we will go to the right, starting with a board member, No.
One, keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus.
Two, ask questions for our own understanding.
Three, be open and honest with each other.
Four, no surprises includes unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district or board superintendent.
Five, be aware of our behavior in the community as it reflects on us as a team.
Any other Executive Cabinet members ready? Number six?
Okay. Number six, communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and the challenges in open session and in advance of public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act.
Number seven, participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader.
Actively support the culture of "we" in action, deed, and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Milpitas Unified School District.
Thank you, everyone. Item 15, Board Communication Request. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School board members may request the placement of items on a future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The student board representative reports on school and student activities. Reports are limited to 90 seconds each. And Scott, let us start with our student board reps.
Okay, we'll go with our middle, college, high school student board rep, Mira Bakta. Go right ahead with your report.
Sorry, can you see me?
Yep, you're good to go.
Hi, school board and various community members present here today. Tomorrow, our student government is having a chess tournament from 3:00 to 6:00 PM where people are welcome to observe and check out our promotional table as well as observe our chess matches. This Friday, we are hosting our annual recruitment lunch meant to help hopeful students better understand our campus and student body. While there, we plan on having an application workshop to help students apply to our school and potentially join our middle, college family. As a reminder, our application window closes March 31st and is open right now. As well as, our student government just opened their elected and appointed official applications, which closes March 30th. Finally, we look forward to many of our students gearing up to, to have their, commence their community impact project solutions with both our juniors and seniors this time around. Thank you.
Thank you, student board rep Bakta. And we're going to move along to our Calaveras Hills High School student board rep, Ariana Rochak. Right ahead.
Hello. So our basketball team came in first place for the championship on Friday, March 10, and we are preparing for our third quarterfinals. They will be tomorrow, Wednesday, and on Thursday, and students are working hard to prepare. The fourth quarter starts on Monday. SVC team came to speak to us about enrolling into their program in the fall. We are preparing for CASP testing. We will be testing the first week of April. We are also preparing for our second year of April Academy. Students will have the opportunity to get caught up on credits. Their work will be displayed at our awards night in May. And Deanna College is coming to present on Friday, March 17. We'll be scheduling a visit to their campus in April or May. And career day is on March 31st, and we will have almost two dozen presenters. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the board, I would like to, this time, start myself, with myself this time. And I'm going to yield my time to Lita Meyer, who leads our Science Olympia team. And if you could come to the mic and share a few words.
So this Saturday, we had the privilege of hosting the regional competition and, for Santa Clara County. And it was a great thing to have so many students at Milpitas High School doing science all day long. And we concluded with a award ceremony that filled our gym. All of the stands, the floor, everything, to give out awards for the competition that includes 23 events for middle school and 23 events for the high school, and then overall awards. And we had Anu, Kelly, and Chris, and Cheryl that were all there and helping hand out awards. And that was such a great thing for us, and we appreciate all of your support. Thank you so very, very much. The best news is that Milpitas High School placed third place, our highest placement ever. Our blue team will actually be going to the state tournament, which is on April 22nd. So look for our application for a field trip. I also have, as promised, T-shirts for everyone. So that are the good Milpitas High School, Milpitas, Rancho, and Russell because we all work as a team. We had three high school teams and two from Rancho and two from Russell. And amazing, I can't do it without the other coaches, Roberto Alvalice and Sharon Deep, and then Cam Hathi at Russell, along with Quinn Hahn at Russell, and Penny Perkins at Rancho. Thank you.
Yep, I got mine.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work that you do.
Thank you.
Who needs a small?
You're not small?
It might be Chris, no, it's me.
Do we get to call you doctor yet?
Almost.
Almost. May. All right, awesome.
That's awesome. Thank you for that news. And now we'll go to Board Member Naka.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Norwood. Good evening, and happy Women's History Month, everyone. And speaking of my representation, I was at Senate Randall Ann Pomroy for Milpitas Reads Program by the Kivani's Club. Alongside President Norwood, I was a guest reader at Rose Elementary for Read Across America and Dr. Seuss Birthday Annual Event. Attended MPTA, Rancho School Site Council, Chamber, and City Hall Meetings, volunteered at charity bingo, represented our district at Hooley, the Indian Festival of Colors event, was at International Women's Day event. And alongside Superintendent Jordan, President Norwood, and Board Clerk Yip Chuan, I attended Santa Clara County's Science Olympia Regional Tournament that was held at MHS. Our students did amazing job. And MHS is qualified for the NorCal Science Olympic National Qualifying Tournament. Go Trojans! Lastly, attended Apali Spring Public Officials Forum along with my fellow board trustee, Yip Chuan. And that concludes my report. Thank you so much, and over to you, President Norwood.
Thank you. Board Clerk Kelly Yip Chuan.
Thank you very much, President Norwood. So I'll skip some of the events that my colleague here mentioned. We also did a school visit to Rancho. We, well, I went to Evan Low's luncheon, the Thought Exchange Chat GPT Conversation, attended the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. I read to the Burnett Elementary School kids under the Kiwanis of Milpitas. And my most exciting event was attending and giving out the awards at the Science Olympia Award Ceremony with my other colleagues. Thank you.
Vice President, Mary No.
Yes, thank you, President Norwood. So this, past activities, I attended the Rose Family TK Kinder Family Night as part of Kiwanis Reads. I read at the Rose Elementary School. And the same night, I also did the bedtime story reading with my fellow trustees here at Rose Elementary. I attended the Milpitas North Valley Softball Opening Day. Attended the Chat GPT Conversation, really fascinating stuff. I don't know if it's recorded, if anyone did miss it. It'd be great for them to re-watch that conversation. Attended our student-led conferences. It's amazing how many years it's taken to, for our students to really get fully acclimated based on what the teachers are leading our students to. It's just fabulous that they can, you know, tell us about their learning experience directly. Volunteer at the book fair at Rose Elementary. I know it's a lot of Rose Elementary, so I invite, you know, other schools to please invite me. And I'm willing to be a volunteer and willing participant. And I attended the CSBA-led Action Meeting with Senator Cortez earlier today. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And thank you for all of your service, besides doing your homework and reading all the different information, your participation in the community meeting with legislators, visiting school sites, and just keeping Milpitas Unified School District education at the forefront of your activities as elected officials is greatly appreciated. Item 16, Reports. 16I, Learning and Development, Healthier Kids Foundation Partnership.
I'll go ahead and just introduce this comment up. So it's my pleasure this evening to have Tracy Wingrove here with Healthier Kids Foundation. We have many partnerships in this district, and Healthier Kids Foundation has been a huge asset to us in terms of providing screenings, free screenings for the district, as well as education for our students. And this evening, we're going to share a little bit about all of the things that Healthier Kids Foundation does provide for our district. It's a fabulous partnership, and happy to turn this over to Tracy to share out with our slide deck. Go ahead, Scott. Oh, sorry, Kathleen King is online. So Kathleen King is, was the one that we initiated with. I guess it's been a year or two ago now at this point in terms of working together with it. Kathleen has been also a huge asset in terms of helping us to leverage additional partnerships and grant funding throughout the district. And we've been able to create other partnerships, other found, funding in collaboration with the city, and that's all through the work that Kathleen has done. So Kathleen, thank you for being online with us this evening, and thank you for always advocating for us in all of the work that you do and in all of the forums. So I don't know if there's anything else you would like me to add to that. Okay, so I'll turn it over to Tracy now.
Thank you, Mary J. Hello, everyone. I'm Tracy Wingrove. I'm the Chief Development Officer at Healthier Kids Foundation, and we're really excited to be here and share some information with you about our work in the Milpitas Unified School District. We also value our partnership very much, and we're really, again, happy to be here and happy to partner with you throughout the year. Can we have the next slide, please? Thank you. Wanted to start off just giving folks a bigger picture view of what our organization does. I will read our vision, our mission, but not the rest. Our mission is to remove health barriers impacting the learning and life success of Silicon Valley youth, which sounds like it's very much in align with your all values as well. And, and we do that with several strategies. And, and our vision is to really see, see good health, educational equity, and success in life. Next slide, please. In addition to the healthcare screenings that we do here in Milpitas, they include vision, dental, and hearing, as well as an emotional wellness screening that we're piloting this year. We have some educational programs that we do around healthy lifestyles and oral healthcare. And we have another set of services in which we help people get Medicaid insurance and help them make appointments in the healthcare system. Next slide. So as I mentioned, our partnership here in Milpitas includes our actual physical and screenings as well as our follow-up care support. And I want to stop for a second and emphasize that this is actually our secret sauce. Not only do we screen kids for healthcare issues, but we follow up with families of any child that screens out of range, and we offer to help them overcome barriers to access healthcare for their children. And so we're not just screening and then letting parents figure out what to do with that. We're following up with families, and we, we help them overcome whatever barriers they have, whether it be transportation, lack of insurance, they have language barriers. And we stay with them, and we follow up with them until their child gets the care they need. That's where we make a huge impact on families. And in addition, we do offer the lifestyle classes here in Milpitas, the healthier, 10 Steps to Healthy You, which focuses on healthy eating routines, and has been really popular. And we do smile-first oral education in conjunction with our dental screening. And very exciting to share that we are doing a pilot program for universal wellness checks for fifth graders at Rose Elementary School this year. So this will be the first time we do this emotional wellness screening here in Milpitas. We do this in other school districts in the valley, and we're really excited to bring it here. And and, and see how that pilot goes with you and do it again next year, hopefully. Next slide. As Mary Jude mentioned, one of the things about our partnership that we're really proud of is not just that we are doing the work that we normally do, but we have also helped raise additional funding to help the school district in its work. One of those fundraising efforts we did was we raised $90,000 in grant funding to support a schooling service supervisor, which is really important because that's the person who helps families get services. So it helps us do our jobs as well, but we feel like it's really important to the families to have that service. And then we raised almost a million dollars to cover the screenings that we do here in Milpitas. And just to clarify, the school district is not paying for our screenings. We are actually raising that money and then bringing the services to the school district. And I did want to give a shout out to Supervisor Lee, who contributed $55,000 to this year's funding as an earmark funding. So thank you to Supervisor Lee. Next slide. This slide shows a con, uh, two years that we've been doing physical screenings here. The first slide shows last year's screenings. It breaks out vision, dental and hearing. And you can see the number of screenings we did, the number, the percentage of students who screened out of range and the successful outcomes. And I did just want to point out that you will notice both in the numbers from last year and the numbers from this year that the screening, children who screen out of range is fairly high. You know, this year, we're seeing 18% of children screened out of range for vision and 32% screened out of range for dental. Pre-pandemic, we were seeing much lower numbers, about 14% for vision and like 20, 25% for dental. So there's been a big uptick. And we know that children did not get their, you know, normal dental and physical healthcare appointments and they didn't go to see the optometrist often during the pandemic for a number of reasons. There's also been some studies suggesting that children were inside a lot during the pandemic and not having exposure to the sunlight may have affected the development of children's eyes and eyesight. And so we are, as a result of, you know, the lack of preventative care and this change from the pandemic, we are working with a lot more children who are screening out of range than we're used to.
Excuse me, can you help define screening out of range? You mentioned that a couple times.
Sure, sure, sure.
Be very helpful to define that.
To give you an example, when we do our vision screening, we use a photo optic camera. And so we are measuring the child's eyesight. And we can tell whether or not they have myopia or astigmatism, you know, from using this camera. And so if the child does not have 20/20 vision, you know, they have some vision issue that shows up in a report that is generated and is sent home with the child's, to the child's family. So when I'm, so thank you for calling me out on that. So when I'm mentioning screening out of range, it means that we found a vision issue, the dentist who, who screened the child found some sort of a dental issue or the hearing test that we did with the children, you know, found a hearing issue.
Gotcha. Appreciate that.
Certainly. And then the successful outcomes from last year show the number of families that we were able to successfully help get care. And this is another number that has dropped somewhat since the pandemic. It's been harder to connect with families since the pandemic and get care for them. And so that's actually one of the reasons why we're so happy to be here because it is through the exposure and education of families through the schools themselves, the school district, the board, the district office, the teachers, the schools. The more that families know that we're on campus and we're doing this screening, when our care coordinators give them a call, if their child has screened out of range, they know who we are. They answer the phone, they talk to us and we are able to help them. So I just wanted to emphasize again that we're so grateful to be here. It really helps us do our job to get the word out about what we do. Could I have the next slide, please? As I mentioned, we've been seeing a lot of kids screen out of range in the dental, when we do our dental screening. And this is especially been shown, we've seen that, excuse me, a much higher number of dental emergencies. This, these are the numbers from this year. So 25% of the children that we screened this year had an urgent dental need and 6% of those had an emergency dental need that needed, you know, immediate attention. And then the second chart shows that breakout by grade level. And so you'll notice that some of the grades have much taller graphs than others. That's because we screen at the, the state mandated grades. And so those are the, the grades that you're seeing have those high results. There are a few other, in those other grades, because we also screen the kids in the special day class and they could be in any grade, so sharing those numbers with you all. So you can see that the numbers are high pretty consistently until you get to 10th grade. So kids are definitely needing, needing dental support right now. Next slide, please. Thank you. And I just, again, wanted to share with you that folks here in the Milpitas School District have been participating in our healthier, 10 steps to healthier you program, which is actually for parents. We've had 71 participants. And the Smile First Program for Oral Health at 914 participants is for kids. And that's what the picture is, is showing you, Smile First Program. Next slide, please. I, I wanted to open it up to questions. Does the board have any questions about the work that we're doing?
I, I do. Thank you very much for your presentation. You mentioned in your earlier slide, slide five, that you raised like, you know, almost a million for the screening and you received 55,000. That's how you're getting like contributions and donations? Are you partnering with like dental offices for like the screening or anything like that? Or do you hire dental offices for the screening? How does, you know?
Sure. So I'll answer, I think it was a two-part question. I'll answer the first part. We have a variety of funders. We do have some county funding that we use to go out and work with the school districts. But we also raise money from private foundations and individuals. I write a lot of grants. And so, so we're, we're funded by a number of different sources. To answer your second question, we do actually pay our dentists for their time when they come and do the screenings with us. And we have a number of dentists that we contract with who, who work with us on an ongoing basis. And I, I'm going to introduce my colleague, Laura Clint Daniel, who's here with us. She's the Vice President of Programming and she might have more to add.
Thank you for letting me jump in. I just wanted to, I'm like so eager, you know? So thank you. Thank you for having us. As Tracy said, I'll try to be, keep this quick. My name's Laura Clint Daniel. I'm the VP of Programs with Healthier Kids Foundation. And so to add a little bit more to that and to add a little bit more to the, the screening technology and what out of range means too, I'll cover that a little bit too. The dentists, we contract with them. They do a visual inspection of the child's mouth. And then they, they dictate to our screener whether the student is doing well, just needs routine maintenance, if they have urgent dental needs or emergency dental needs. And so those are the kids, the urgent and emergency, those are the kids that we're following up with to make sure that they get into care. The report that the parents are getting after the screening takes place is very visual, very clear, actually circles on the mouth where they're seeing an issue with their student's teeth. And then on the back of the screening form, we actually have a list of clinics that are currently accepting new patients and currently accepting new Medi-Cal patients. We also list specifically what languages they support well in those clinics too. Do you want me to elaborate a little bit more on the vision piece, just quickly? Because I, so the vision camera itself, and we can send you some examples of what these look like because I think that they're really interesting. The vision camera, it's a photo refractive camera. It scans the back of the student's eye, so it can tell you anatomically if anything is wrong with their vision. It basically tells you, the results share whether you are, if you, it places you out of range if you're over 1.0 or under negative 1.0. And so that's how it flags you as being out of range. The student doesn't have to be verbal to, for the camera to work. They don't have to put their hand up. They don't have to say, I see an A, an E, an I or an O. And then hearing is very similar. They don't have to be verbal. It's a sound that, or a wavelength that goes into their ear through a probe. And then based on how that wavelength comes back, we're able to measure whether the student may be having a hearing issue. So thank you for letting me jump in. Sorry to steal extra time. Can't help myself.
Do you have any questions while Laura is up here to answer all, answer them so thoroughly?
Yeah, no, thank you for the thoroughness of that and thank you for being here and presenting. We know that children who have discomfort or have certain, you know, health, vision and hearing adds to kind of that learning disability in that way, right? I was curious, do you, you track data as far as students that come in and how they're performing? And then the services you provide and how they perform afterwards?
We do not, but we wish we could because yes, that would tell such a fantastic story. We do know that children perform better if they can see the board, if they can hear what the, what's being said in the class, you know, if they're not in pain from dental issues. But we don't, we're not able to track them before and after.
Gotcha. And my other question is, you know, the pilot program, why fifth graders specifically?
That's Laura too.
Here I am again. So the pilot program specifically with fifth grade, so the school district is mandated by the state to do vision and hearing screenings at TK, second, fifth, eighth and 10th. We add in dental because we know the need is so high. So fifth grade specifically, we wanted to do it with a group of kids that we already knew that we were going to be present on campus and screening. But second to that, we also feel that it's a really developmentally appropriate age to get into, get these students into services quickly and early before they transition into high school or, I'm sorry, middle school. And the hope is that we can really come from a perspective of prevention and really try and identify students who are struggling early so that we can get them into care.
And I know that you want thorough as far as vision, dental and hearing, but for the emotional wellness, what are you specifically looking for?
Sure. So we use a screening tool. It's 15 questions long. It's a hybrid between Project Cornerstone's developmental asset questions and Kaiser's POQ2. So Kaiser uses the POQ2 in the clinic setting before a child's well check appointment. And so that's just asking them how they've been feeling over the last seven days. So really it's about their emotions, their strengths and their thoughts. It's a non-diagnostic screening tool. And so any student who is flagged based on their Likert scale questions will speak with their parents and really, we know parents are the experts in their child's lives. And so we really open the door for them to sort of think through what sort of resources might be most useful. So sometimes it's resources around tutoring. Sometimes it's after-school programs. Sometimes it's basic needs types of resources. And then sometimes it's behavioral health resources too. So we'll just sort of help them navigate whatever might be most useful.
And I'll just go ahead and add that the screenings that are being done for the mental health with our fifth graders are being done collaboratively also with our mental health clinicians who will be on site along with familiar staff from the school site as well. So it is a collaborative effort between Healthier Kids Foundation and our staff as well.
Yeah, we absolutely could not do it without the great team here at Milpitas Unified. And we, we really want to be engaged in districts that have the support that you guys have been able to offer. So I want to thank you all for that.
Any other comments from the board? Comments from staff?
Thank you so much for having us. Our very last slide, which is part of the packet, is, is just some feedback that we've received from two Milpitas school sites and feedback from a parent who was appreciative of the dental services we were able to, or vision services we were able to provide her son. So thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I would just like to add a few sentences, which are that, one, it took us to have a change in staffing with Executive Director Dorpinghaus in order for this partnership to take off. Chief Executive Officer Kathleen King and I spoke about it actually just before COVID. And we just didn't have the staffing infrastructure to make it happen. So I greatly appreciate, Mary Jude, your efforts in strengthening this partnership and bringing it to full fruition so that it just consistently grows as, as you've demonstrated each year in supporting all of our children and their education. And I know that Kathleen is listening there. And Kathleen is, I'm not going to say retiring, is moving on to other pathways, as we like to say here in Milpitas. And Kathleen, you've been such a wonderful partner and advocate in everything we're trying to do for kids. You've provided a way that we could fund a schooling services supervisor even though you didn't need to. You are there with us as we apply for funding for Innovation Campus and our Early Childhood Educational Research Center with both state and federal governments. You're there giving me ideas of how I can support more of our programming through partnerships with other entities. And you're just amazing. And I see that your staff follows in your footsteps and I look forward to our continued growth together on behalf of all of our workers, I mean students. And there she is.
And as the Board President of Milpitas Unified School District, I echo the sentiments of the superintendent and the staff. Thank you for the insight because what I heard new for me today was the fact that I have a common phrase that I always say is health is wealth. And what you guys made me realize that if kids come to school not healthy, then it is going to affect their ability to be their best selves and their best learners. And there are moments where we can participate in there with the right partners to make a difference in that learning. And you are the organization that we want to do it with for many, many years to come. So thank you for that. Anything that we can do to support your, your continued efforts, please let the superintendent and team know and, and the board will, is there for support as well. So thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Let's like, Chief Executive Officer King would like to say a few words. Can you make that happen?
Thank you. I wasn't prepared for this. You can see I'm not quite dressed or ready for this, but it has been a wonderful partnership. And everything that Superintendent Jordan said about Mary Jude is, I call her Mary Jude, is just right on. And I know with my going on to other things, I have a great staff that feels the same way about kids as you feel about kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving to action item, excuse me, moving from our reports to agenda item 17, action items, 17I, Human Relations, Adoption of the School Calendar for 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Board President Norwood. I'm here with CBAC Chairperson William Lamb, virtually, to share with you the information regarding the proposed 2023-24 school calendar. The first portion of gathering a school calendar is to seek the stakeholder input. And that begins at the executive level here in our school district. That includes our California School Employees Association President, Vice President, Milpitas Teachers Association President, Vice President. Milpitas Teachers Association President, Vice President, our Milpitas Management Association President and President-elect, and our Executive Cabinet, which includes the Superintendent and, um, Assistant Supes and Executive Directors. In November of December of 2022, there were several calendars that were presented and discussed. And from that, um, a calendar, a set of calendars were sent out January 4th to school principals to share with their staff and the school site council. January of 2023, oh, go back Scott. January of 2023, we learned that the governor, Governor Newsom, um, created a state holiday for Lunar New Year. And so the team had to come back to the table and readdress our calendars to include a Lunar New Year as a possible school holiday. January 17th, we sent out, um, those calendars to our school staff and to our parents through our parent square, and we received input. Once that input was gathered, we shared it with our Community Board Advisory Council, who's, um, charged with providing, um, a recommendation to the board based on the input. Um, from the school site councils, which all schools were represented, there was further discussion about the input. And we were asked to be mindful of the needs of Milpitas High School, to consider, um, having a one-week Thanksgiving break, um, to consider having virtual professional development as well as professional development that was onsite for school principals. And we were asked to consider having variations of a longer winter break to consider those who might travel, need to travel a distance. Originally, we started with looking at two calendars. And because of all of the changes that were expressed, uh, the committee decided to, um, focus on just the 2023-24 school calendar. The reason behind that is that through the COVID challenges and, um, we have, we've gone away from the standard calendar that we, we always used. We started creating virtual PDs and we wanted to, the opportunity to be able to see those through and then reflect upon them. So that's the, the reason why we're only bringing forth today a 2023-24 school calendar, because that calendar is slightly different. And, um, the stakeholders would like the ability to reflect upon that calendar before making a decision on the next few years of calendars. So, um. Parents were given the opportunity in February and, as well as, uh, some high school students from Milpitas High School and Calaveras Hills High School, as well as school staff to vote on three calendars. The first calendar mimicked the current year's calendar. The second calendar, in a nutshell, provided two weeks and two days of a winter break. Uh, and also the Thanksgiving break, uh, being a week long. And the third calendar reflected having a three-week winter break. The results were that staff and students voted for draft calendar F, two weeks, two days for the winter break. And overall, um, parents voted for calendar G. However, MHS and several of the school site councils at individual schools supported calendar F, um, for several reasons. One being that they felt that it was too much time for students to be away from school and it would take a while for them to transition back. The other was, um, you know, some mental health challenges that some students have and wanting to have that ongoing support during the school year. So based on, um, all of that information, the Community Board Advisory Council would like to recommend to the board that you take action and approve draft calendar F. And to highlight, draft calendar F has two weeks, two days of a winter break, one week of a Thanksgiving break, and a Lunar New, New Year holiday. And I'm calling out those three things for you because those are new. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. James. Uh, questions from, um, are there any, Scott, are there any comments from the public?
Uh, we have no public comments at this time.
Thank you. Are there any, um, additional questions for, uh, Mr. James?
I, I don't have any additional comments, but I guess I, I'd kind of like to see like the proposed calendar and the one that we're currently in, like side by side, if you have that. If, if not, I can try to look it up.
Uh, Scott, the calendars in the.
This is the, um, calendar for 2023-24.
Yes. And then Scott, you'll have to go to the website to pull up last, uh, this current year's school calendar.
Let's start here. And then we'll go back. I'm gonna hold up by the, um, we're clocking, which calendar would you like to see first?
Uh, like this current year's. I'm, you know, hoping to see it side by side just to see, do a comparison.
Uh, let me see what I can do.
So Damon, are you aware that what the differences are in terms of right offhand, in terms of, that the specific difference is, while he looks to pull that up?
Yes. Uh, so the, the start date is generally the same amount of time. We, we, what we've done is we've added an additional day of school. Um, so the students get out one day later. We tried to, um, rectify this, the semester balance. So the second semester is a little bit longer for the, um, for students, but that's to account for some of the state testing that needs to happen. This year, we had a longer Thanksgiving break. Some of that was, uh, were professional development days, um, for mental health time. And so, um, that actually still coincides with what we're currently doing. And this year, because of the, um, the way that the calendar was set, we were able to have two weeks and one day of a winter break. So we've just added an additional day. But in, in the general sense, winter break has always been two weeks long. And generally, we've, um, school, students have had to go to school Monday and Tuesday of that Thanksgiving break. But as I mentioned, due to COVID, the last couple of years, we have modified that calendar. So what we'd like to do, if, if approved, is try this calendar and then the committee would come back together again to, to address whether or not it was, um, something that worked for the district.
Okay.
Um, to the families that were requesting for that month-long December vacation, what are, what are some of their options?
So we do, we do have independence, long-term independent study. Uh, I should defer to Executive Director Apriti for the information, but specifically they can, they do have that opportunity. However, um, what we did is we extended that winter break to try to eliminate the need for families to have that long-term independent study. So that was part of our strategy in, in limiting the timeframe, both the timeframe for Thanksgiving as well as the timeframe in the winter.
And I'll also add, uh, you'll notice later in our budget report that our average daily attendance has dropped a great deal. We had 50 families who, uh, did independent study. And when they don't return the work, which some of them did not, it, um, takes away our, uh, average daily attendance. And it also, more importantly, impacts their students' learning.
Thank you for that. And, you know, obviously there will be parents that, you know, take that time off, but it's important to remind them that the schoolwork is necessary for, for, um, our district to continue to, to educate their, their child. Because without the funding, uh, we wouldn't be able to provide the additional resources. So, um, uh, as far as the independent study, how many days are available for them there?
Executive Director Johari?
Thank you. Um, so independent study can be, uh, offered for up to 14 days. But one of the things I do want to clarify is that we would not be, um, allowing independent study tied to these longer school breaks. Um, similar to, we don't have it at the very beginning or end of the school year or during state testing time.
Thank you for that. Again, clarity to our, our families is important, right? Because they, they'll come in our principals and talk about, you know, they heard this and heard that. So I appreciate the clarity.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate what Director James said, that, that we are really trying to honor, um, that we serve a community of immigrants or children of immigrants. And that connection to family is really important. And, and we don't want there to be these dueling priorities. And so we hope the longer winter break will allow for that.
And what I see from this proposed calendar, there, even in the second semester, there's, there's actually a good amount of breaks for students. There's, I don't know, we still, still call it ski break, but there's a week break in, in February. There's a week break in, in April. Uh, and so again, there's an apple mile time in the second half of the year.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking at the calendar side by side. I don't really see a huge difference, maybe one or two days are like, like not in there. But yeah, it's, uh, because some parents were concerned about not having, I guess, like babysitters during the long break or something like that while they're at work. But I'm just seeing that there's not much of a difference. So thank you, thank you Scott for pulling this up together.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Uh, I would say thank you so much for the community engagement and the, and gaining the feedback and working together with, um, both, you know, our associations so that we can get to this point so that, you know, we can move forward with the next year's calendar.
Can we also include, um, Chairperson Lamb?
Absolutely. And thank you, uh, to Chairperson Lamb and the CBAC team.
No, you're welcome.
Scott, do we have any additional comments from the public?
Uh, we do have a virtual hand raised. Uh, Brett Weber, we are gonna enable your audio. Take yourself off mute. And you have two minutes to speak. Go right ahead.
Good evening to the school board and to the executive committees. Uh, if I may add a comment on the calendar issue from the viewpoint of teachers, the more we add breaks in the school year, the more we shorten our summer break. And that summer break is really important to our educators. That is the time for us to recharge our batteries, to take a break, to look away from our whiteboards and our computer screens. And the longer winter break is, and the more breaks we have in the school year, the later we get out in June and the earlier we start in August. And I would just ask and caution that we take into consideration that that is the time when your educators get their break. And if that is the time when our families and our students need to take their vacations, then that is what our country traditionally has used summer for. And lengthening our winter break is not necessarily a good thing pedagogically. Thank you for all of your support.
And that was the only public comment so far.
Thank you. Um, uh, and thank you Damon for the information in the background, uh, on this particular issue as it regards to calendar. Um, as, I think we all realize that there are a variety of stakeholders when it comes to, uh, the calendar and a lot of different, uh, viewpoints. Um, growing up, uh, you know, we, we would always kid about, uh, school didn't start till after Labor Day. We're like, school starts earlier and earlier. And, and, and we recognize the fact that that, that's in part to, uh, one, um, one, the, the, the difference in school today in comparison to was many, many years ago. I, I would ask that, um, as we look at this, um, ongoing, um, evolving process, that if there's a way that we can determine if there's a correlation to overall school district attendance based on how we design, uh, the calendar. So for example, that, um, that Monday back from winter break, you know, people that are traveling internationally, sometimes they don't get that flight back until that Sunday. And then they just, in their minds, the families have already taken off that Monday. And so they're not getting kids to school. So I would be interested, when we do this work in the future, we look at the tendencies of the attendance on those days that we're considering as a holiday. Because obviously we all, we've been telling parents for years, this is when you're back. But sometimes they're not, they're not listening and they're gonna do what they want. So, um, and unless we come up with a, a formula or a strategy which, which would be difficult, um, we should always be able to take that in mind as well. Because again, and, and as I think about the last two years in COVID, that, that Monday after the holiday, I've always thought, man, if, if, if families were sick or they were getting oversick or they didn't have the time to test or whatever else, um, we could have really used, uh, some of that time to make sure that we all came back healthy. So, again, thinking about this process moving forward as we, uh, address the calendar, we also want to think about the, the health and safety of the staff, uh, with all the travel and the fact that we have a whole lot more diseases and flus and stuff out there as well. So can taking health into consideration for the staff as well as the families uh, should be a part of the process as well. I know this is, again, a moving target with the number of holidays and all the different things that are happening, but if we can figure out some metrics that we can evaluate some of the decisions that we're making, uh, versus kind of just going on what we think emotionally. I know that we had talked about doing, um, the Thanksgiving week, uh, for quite a while, uh, because we were finding that a number of parents were leaving, um, and, and teachers were scrambling to get kids their work, uh, because they were gonna leave anyway. And then we just, we collectively made the decision that, okay, this is, we're gonna try this to see how it works out. So if, if there's any data that we can start to gather in the evaluation of this type of stuff in the future, that would be very helpful when we do this presentation to the board. Thank you.
We will have that data. And we can still collect the data and present it as a report later in the, at one of our upcoming board meetings.
Thank you. We have a, we have a motion. Keep motion in a second.
I think I see William Lamb hands up.
We have a hand?
Yes, uh, thank you, um, Board. Um, this is William. Um, in the past 10 years, a number of, uh, parents has raised, uh, their voice on Lunar New Year. Um, I'm delighted. Uh, this year, our governor declared that, uh, Lunar, uh, we should observe Lunar New Year. Um, um, and also I'm, uh, very happy that our school district, um, has considered and adopted that as a holidays. Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy to, to see that before, um, my daughter's graduated from our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so is there a, a motion to approve, uh, adoption of the school calendar for 23-24?
Move to motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, Damon. Mr. James. And team for your work and William for making that happen. Um, and thank you Superintendent for making the recommendation that we get a chance to look at the data around some of the decisions on adoption of the calendar. Um, item 17-2, learning and development, approve expanded learning opportunity program plan, otherwise also known as, uh, approve ELOP, uh, program plan, or ELOP.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we'll wait for Scott to pull up our slide deck. But I, you know me, I'm Preeti Jahari, Executive Director of Learning and Innovation, and I'll be presenting this evening with
Come on now.
Yvonne Sukimora, Coordinator of English Learners Literacy and Intervention. So I'll just get started while we're waiting for the slide deck. So ELOP stands for Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. Last year, we presented a multi-year plan to you as the first year of implementation, but we're making some significant changes to the plan, so we wanted to share it again with you and ask for your approval for the updates that we are making. The ELOP is funding that we get from the state to implement the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program.
During your presentation, will you share why you're making the changes?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
So Expanded Learning refers to before-school, after-school, summer, as well as, you can call them non-instructional days or intercession, that can take place during February break, April break, or Saturdays or the weekend. So that's, the names are sort of all encompassing there. And the funding is coming from the state, and it is directly intended to support our TK to six students. So that is the target, target student group that we are meant to serve with this funding. And even within that student group, specifically our unduplicated students, which are our low-income students, our foster and homeless youth, as well as our English language learners. And the goal of this programming is to accelerate their learning and close the opportunity gap. And we would do that through academic learning, enrichment, physical activity, as well as social emotional learning. Next slide. So last year, the program that we presented to you really had one, one thing. It was an after-school access program. We expanded our partnership with After the Bell, and that, that in and of itself was an incredible feat to take on, to be able to serve the number of students that the, that we targeted, the full population of our unduplicated students in the district. This year, we are presenting a multi-pronged plan, as we have gotten some pieces under our belt. So we are, one, looking to make a more robust after-school program and share with you a new partnership that we have spent time researching and why we think this is the best fit for our district, as well as there are multiple more components now. So the programs on the left are the After School Access Program and High Impact Tutoring. Those are programs that we are working with external vendors to develop. And then the programs on the right, After School, Small Instruction, Homework Help, kind of like a tutoring center, as well as the intercession programs like April Acceleration Academy, Saturday Academies, specifically targeting our English Language Learner students, Summer School. Those programs are staffed and led by MUSD staff. The reasons that we are making these changes is that we, as we have gotten the after-school programming more strengthened and understand the mechanics of how to do that, we are now in a position to actually think about multiple tiers of support. So one of the things that I've heard as still a new leader here in Milpitas is that, hey, we talk about MTSS, we talk about multiple tiers of support, but where are they? What are they? Do we have them consistently across all of our schools, specifically our elementary schools? So this is a way for us to do that, to really codify the tiered supports and think about what do all students have access to in the gen ed classroom, and how do we leverage gen ed and special education classrooms, like the daily classroom instruction? And then what are the ways in which we can provide additional supports that complement what is happening in the daily classroom activities? So today, in particular, we're going to go deep on one part, the After School Access Program, and share with you the research we've done around the different vendors and ask you to approve the plan, but also, one of the consent items is the MOU with a specific partner. So to talk more about that, I'll hand it off to Yvonne.
Next slide, please, Scott. Okay, President Norwood, as you had asked, how come the changes? And so as Executive Director Jahari had mentioned, I will have to say, MUSD were ahead of the game. There are districts currently this year who are launching partnerships for the first time. Last year, we had already launched the partnership with After the Bell to expand their after-school care access. This year, through Assembly Bill 130 amended by 181, the state of California is requiring LEAs, S being one, right, to have a more robust program.
LEA is?
Local Educational Agency.
Thank you.
By school districts. A more robust program. And so on this slide here, these are the four components in which the state will require all school districts to provide as part of their after-school program. We have the component of academic and literacy element that could be seen through homework support or a content curriculum that is provided by the partnership. An enrichment element that can be seen through physical education, arts and crafts, STEAM activities, or leadership character development.
Computer science?
Computer science, yes. Coding, all that. So all that is considered enrichment element. The other one, nutritious snack and/or meal. So we want to, again, promote like the whole child approach. So we're enriching the mind with the literacy academic piece. We're enriching their body and their creativity through the enrichment, but we want to make sure that we are balancing their healthy body as well, so ensuring that we have a nutritious snack provided. And then the last requirement states that our staff, who we partner with, the agency must have their employees meet the minimum required equivalent to that of our MUSD paraprofessional. So those are kind of the big four components that the state is requiring of school districts in, in when they look to partner with an agency to provide the after-school care access. So for additional information, this past winter, we actually were able to go through a robust bid proposal. So we went out and asked for bid proposals from multiple agencies. Currently this year, we do have some after-school vendors at some of our elementary sites. And all those vendors were contacted and then asked to provide a bid proposal if they were interested in providing after-school care access through ELOP with MUSD for next year. Following all that, we also went out and sought feedback. So prior to our February break, we sent out, you might have seen via Parents Square, feedback from families in regards to what they're looking for when it comes to after-school care access. And so here provides the feedback that we received. So taking a look at what families are looking for, at 91%, families responded, they're looking for enrichment activities through physical education and STEAM. 78% of our families responded that supervised onsite childcare would be an area of priority. Next, at 72%, literacy and academic opportunities for their child. And then rounding out the top four at 52%, leadership development. And so that was the feedback that we were able to collect from our families. We were also able to connect with our district leaders in providing them with all of the bid proposals as well, and ask for their feedback in terms of what partnership agency would best meet the needs of the students here in MUSD. Yes.
So when you say district leaders, are you referring to the school site principals?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Next slide. So we went through all of that, and as we went through, and based upon the feedback, we would like to recommend Right at School to be our MUSD provider for our TK through six after-school program. Joining us today virtually is Cindy Lawson. She is part of Right at School, and she is the Vice President for School Partnerships. So we take a look, why Right at School? To be honest, all the bids that we received had good pieces, but we really wanted to focus in on who can provide what our students need most. And here, we outlined the four key areas that Right at School is able to provide for us. The first one, they are an established program. They opened up in 2011. They were serving, I think, 200 students a day back then, but now they're currently serving 20,000 students a day. Recently, they launched in Santa Clara Unified this year, as well as our neighboring Barriessa School District. They are already in a neighboring Fremont School District, as well as Palo Alto. And so as you can see, they are serving school districts that kind of reflect the demographics that we have here in MUSD. Second, they have their own curriculum design lead, meaning that they actually have created standards-aligned literacy curriculum to, again, help accelerate our students to participate in their program. Next, voice and choice. We know that's really important, that students have the ability to kind of advocate what they would like to learn and be able to choose. And so Right at School is able to work with us in terms of establishing and incorporating a menu of physical and STEAM activities that our students are able to choose from. And then lastly, they meet that piece of nutritious and healthy snacks. So they will ensure that our students will be able to learn healthy choices, extend it into the food snacks that they're able to enjoy when they're at the after-school. Cindy, are you there?
I'm here.
Perfect.
All right, I just, honestly, I just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to partner with Milpitas. This is near and dear to my heart. I lived in Milpitas for many, many, many years, and my son went through and went to Burnett Elementary. Jared Lawson, it was Milpitas night for, from the time he started till the time he went to high school. And so again, would love to be able to have the opportunity to partner there in Milpitas.
Awesome. Thank you, Cindy. And another big piece, actually, in, in speaking with all of the vendors that we connected with, one piece that Right at School was able, is able to provide for us is ensuring that they collaborate with district leaders as well as site leaders to support all of our students, inclusive of students that have Section 504s and IEPs. We understand that our program does support all of our students, meaning that if students are requesting after-school care access and they do have a Section 504 or an individualized educational plan, that that will also be supported in the after-school care programming through additional staffing if needed. And Right at School is able to provide that partnership with us to provide the staffing as well. And then I think we have our last slide, Scott? So our next steps, it's a big one. And this is how we communicate to our families about the offering of our after-school care. So we are hoping by early April, we will provide registration to families of our unduplicated students. So those are our priority group of students. By late April, we will then open registration to all families that would like after-school care, but through fee-for-service. And then late May, we will then follow up with families, confirmation in terms of details of the after-school program. We know that families want to know if their child has after-school care access prior to going on summer break, so everyone can plan accordingly. And so we will be working diligently to make sure we get all that completed before summer break. Questions?
Board, are there any questions at this time?
Yes, actually. Thank you for the presentation again. And I was wondering if there are any specific school sites which are looking at the targeted, you know, like scope of having those percentiles that you mentioned, like the STEAM or, you know, extended learning, specific to any school sites, like, because for the matters that I noticed for the STEAM showcase, there was, you know, a great number of students that signed up. So is there any specific allocation?
So that's a nice thing with Right at School. They're open to the collaboration with site administrators. And so if there's a need specifically at a site, for example, maybe, hey, can the after-school care teachers support kids in developing a project? That is probably we could have an open conversation with and build that in. And so that was another positive thing about Right at School. They're open to that collaboration in terms of needs of the site and students.
So they're going to cater?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a staff to student ratio that you're looking?
Great question. Yes, the state requires that the ratio of TK and K students has to be one staff to 10 students. In grades one through six, the state requires a 20 to one ratio, 20 students to one staff. But Right at School believes in smaller number size, and so we're going to staff at 15 to one.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Any additional questions?
As far as the program, what are the hours that would be effective for our families?
Yes. The state of California requires that we have to provide a nine-hour day. That includes the instructional learning. And then beyond that, Right at School will offer, have students come to the program at dismissal, and then we'll go until 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
So just a clarification, right? So it all depends on how many families are going to apply to the school, right? Because you wouldn't have like a, like a few students and you wouldn't have the program there. You would probably go to a neighboring school, or how does that work?
No. So our contract is we will have this partnership at all 10 elementary sites.
And then follow-up, as far as the space utilized at each of the sites? Has that already been identified, or is that still?
Yes. So it's going to be based upon need at individual sites. And so in terms of allocation, once we know how many families are interested, we will work with the site administrators for allocation of space on their campus.
And then uniqueness for here at World Languages School? Would there be specific world languages programs?
You're asking other great questions. Another positive thing about Right at School is they're actually able to get bilingual teachers. And so we've already had a conversation that for Randall, to support our dual immersion students, the instructors will be able to be, will be able to speak Spanish.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I would like to direct this question, well, it's probably a collective answer from the provider, Cindy and the team. I'm interested in how we are going to measure success. And I guess maybe I could ask the question, starting with the provider, Cindy, how do you define a successful year with Right at School?
Well, I mean, there's lots of different things. I mean, we're, we, we do have a lot of, we do a lot of work around SEL and the castle framework, right? So we want to make sure children feel that sense of belonging, that they feel valued, they feel respected, and that they feel like they're a valuable part of the community that we're in. We consider ourselves kind of a family. And so we do surveys. We do surveys to not only our families, but to our clients, survey our students, and then obviously attendance, making sure that they're attending every day. We can monitor their attendance. So there's lots of different things. I mean, there's, it's really hard in the after-school world to measure, measure success, because not everybody comes every day. There's different variables. They might not have the same schedules. So we've been trying for years to try and measure some successful outcomes, and it's really hard because the deliverables change every day. But there's different things that we look at in terms of participation and surveys that we send out to families. And then we can also work in conjunction with Milpitas if there's certain things that they would like to be seen.
I know you're looking for a little bit more concreteness there, Mr. Norwood.
A little bit.
A little bit more. Yeah, so, you know, at the very base level, it is about participation. And one, we are amping up the programming to increase the amount of participation that we have. But ultimately, the reason that I'm, one of the, there's many reasons, like the staffing that we talked about, but I think Right at School was the, one of the few programs that has a concrete curriculum in place that's implemented and it's very hands-on. So that learning needs to then translate into academic outcomes for students as well as those SEL outcomes for students. So those are tied back to our LCAP and tied back to Goal One and Goal Two that we have. So, you know, there's a lot of different things that we do for kids, and then we're looking to see those outcomes from there. But I think you've got maybe more feedback.
Yeah, we're going to dig in just a little bit, and then we're going to move on to the next item. When we talk about the organization having curriculum, and the fact that this is a nine-hour day, so it's an extension to the school day, and it's supposed to tie back, would a metric of success be the ability to look at the performance on assessments of our students that are in the program in comparison to those that are not?
Yeah, so I think we can definitely do that. Look at who's in the program and who's not, and then look at outcomes on our metrics like I ready. I think one of the things is that we are doing multiple different interventions, so it's hard to disaggregate which one really worked. Because in addition, the other component of this ELOP program, in addition to Right at School and that curriculum, is also layering on the targeted tutoring for students, which will take place during that, that after-school time for students. And that should have a And that should have a very, very direct connection to what they're doing in the classroom and the tutoring. So what is the exact skill that they need extra time on or are missing and need to learn to engage with the grade-level content? So I think it would be great for us to measure who didn't do either of these interventions and what are their outcomes, as well as who participated purely in the after-school programming, what their outcomes are, who participated in the after-school programming, plus high-impact tutoring, and what were their outcomes.
So it sounds like I heard that one of the metrics of success that we're going to measure is the overall attendance of the program. We're also going to measure through the survey of the experience of the students of the program as well as the parents in the program. We're also going to look at the academic performance of the students in this particular program in comparison to the other intervention programs that we have, because some of those programs are going to have the high-impact tutoring and the others will not. And then we also have other metrics, like for example, what Board Member Naka referred to as far as participation in other activities in terms of, on that things that happen in the district, which also includes academic productivity. So those will be our four measures, the four metrics of success that we're agreeing upon tonight.
Yes, those are built into our plan.
So I didn't hear those built into the plan, right? I kind of like started, I kind of, so attendance? So yeah, so yes.
Yes. I think the only one I have a clarifying question is, I think what Board Member Naka was saying, I don't think that's separate from the, just the after-school program.
Because what Board Member Naka was referring to is that there are activities that go on in the district. So for example, we have the STEAM showcase.
Okay.
And that if we encourage, because we know that those things are happening in our district, we're encouraging students and we have the partnership with Right at School to partner with them so that we can encourage more kids to be involved. Like, I would love, just everyone in the board would love to see more students from Randall and Rose and Burnett and those schools participate in the STEAM showcase. And having this type of environment may provide that opportunity. So that was the metric that I was referring to.
Yes, that makes sense. And yes, we can say, we can commit to that.
Preeti, you know, everybody's hearing you say yes, right? It's kind of locking in my head that you are saying yes to this, right?
So in other words, my executive director, coordinator, and Ms. Lawson, what I would suggest is on the calendar of the cycle for the calendar, is identify things like our Science Olympias, because we do have that elementary, middle school level. And then also the STEAM showcase, and also the Milpitas Elementary Olympics. And work backwards to assure that Right at School is doing some sort of preparatory work with the students so that they feel excited about and ready to participate in those.
Yeah, I'm hearing two things. One is making sure our calendars are aligned and communicated. And two, when we're sharing the data, really disaggregating that by who's participated in these, at the different levels that we talked about and what their outcomes are.
Because it is being done across the country, what we're talking about in terms of the measuring of success. And many kids will tell you or parents my age and younger that after-school saves lives. It inspires kids to get involved in a lot of different things, build network capacity, build their capacity to explore their learning, because it's a very different experience than the school day. And I want to make sure that our after-school programming with the vendor that you've selected is one, the, doing that piece, but then also the academic piece that aligns it with ELOP that we can tie back to recognize that this is an extension, but a different type of experience for our students so that they can be successful. We're in Milpitas, you know the bar. You know what we want for our kids. So thank you for that. Are there any other questions? Okay. Scott, are there any hands?
Trustee.
Oh, Trustee Naka.
I have a quick follow-up question. I won't take long. Actually, I can see in the program plan that, you know, for grades TK to 12, the homework help and the small intervention enrollment for 22, 23 is zero. So is there something that we are planning to offer for the upcoming academic year for the middle and high schools as well, to encourage more participation in the Science Olympia that we had, something like that in future?
Yeah, so we do want to clarify that the funding is primarily for TK to six. So that's where the large, largest allocation is going. But we are able to, we do have additional funding that we are then, like, April Academy, I talked about what we're starting with TK to six. We will also be doing the same program again at Cal Hills. We started it last year. We'll do that as well this year. And I think our student board rep also talked about that this evening. And then what we hadn't done before was, again, create that systemic tutoring, the tiered tutoring, that's whether it's like the small group instruction homework help that we need, or the targeted tutoring that needs to happen. And we will be looking to build that in at the middle and high school level as well.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Preeti.
Awesome, thank you. And we do have a comment. I think we're good. We do have a comment from the public?
David Flashner. I'm a parent of the school district, and my daughter is a special education student who utilizes After the Bell currently. And it sounds like a phenomenal program, but I didn't hear the cost of it, because After the Bell is $1,800, and it's a really good deal. While it doesn't support everybody, just before the board votes, I'm curious what the cost is of how much we're asking parents to pay. On top of that, excuse me, I'm curious, you brought up special ed and if they have an IEP or 504, and if they need extra services that, my apologies, the service will provide for it, who pays for that service? Is that something that the district, through your child having an IEP, is required to pay for? Or is that a burden put onto the parents that they have to pay for? And the last question I have is, After the Bell does not guarantee enrollment for everybody. Is this program specifically guarantee enrollment for everybody in the district? Or is there a priority system based upon how your child is needed? Those are my three questions. Thank you very much. It sounds like a great program.
Do you want to do the money part?
Sure. Yeah, I can do the money part. So, one. So one thing is, because of the shift in the program requirement, it required all of the people providing bids to adjust their pricing. Because when you're talking about hiring an agency to be able to provide homework help, it requires then the staff members to then have a little bit more educational background. And so that, those four requirements was a piece that we really had to stick with. Two, around the costs, all the costs actually was somewhat, actually comparable. And so the cost for the Right at School, for ELOP, for families, and we want to note also that families who are, meet the criteria of unduplicated, so they are, they qualify for free or reduced, foster youth, or McKenna Vento, we cannot charge fees. All fees are waived for those families, hence the funding coming from the state of California. And so the cost annually per child with Right at School would be $2,770. For TK through, TK through K, it's slightly a little bit more, I can't remember that number because of the ratio, and so the staffing has to be different. Again, for families who meet the unduplicated status, it's no cost to those specific families. We're currently working on a scaled cost for families that are identified only as English learners. And so the state of California does allow school districts to then charge families who don't meet the UPP definition. Again, free and reduced, McKenna Vento, foster youth. The state says that we can then charge the additional families. In terms of costs for students, part of that is ELOP states that anything that the students need that meet those criterias and which fees are waived, we as a school district must provide out of our budget. So if students needed additional support in terms of staff-to-student ratio, and they qualify under, again, the UPP definition, we as a school district must cover that cost.
The other thing that I would add is that Right at School will be our program across all 10 elementary schools that's funded through ELOP. Sites are still able to choose if they also want to have After the Bell. There can be multiple after-school programs at the school site. So we know a couple of our elementary schools have already committed to also having After the Bell continue at their site. I believe Five Stars is another program that is at some of our elementary schools. So there may be multiple after-school programs taking place through ELOP. The one that we are funding is Right at School.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. And thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, Cindy, for being here and getting your first experience with Milpitas in terms of how we think about our extended learning and the care that the community has as well as the board. We look forward to working with you and building a relationship that produces desired results on behalf of our students and families.
We look forward to it as well.
And with that said, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Thank you very much, team. Great job. Seventeen, item three, business services. Accept the 2223 second interim report and submit a positive financial certification to the Senate Clerk of County Office of Education, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Hi, good evening again. We prepared a short presentation for tonight, but before we start our presentation, I'd just like to spend a few minutes to go over the attachment in the board agenda for your review. So in this, this second interim is our second major budget update for this year. And in the attachment, we have a summary of the changes compared in detail by each major category. For example, we start with reference 8.1. This reference is referred to State Sacs Form, the standardized accounting form that you will see in the package. And we have a reconciliation between the second interim to the first interim. And then we also attach, so this is the standardized state form that I was referencing earlier. And then we have an income statement of each fund listed here with the summary of revenue and expenditures and ending fund balance. And then after that, we have our multi-year projection summary here. And now, tonight, actually, our business services team, I would like to invite our Director of Business Services, Shani Yan, and Supervisor Duke Wu to go over most of the presentations, and then I'm just going to close out. So let me share the presentation. Okay. Here we go. Can I see it? Okay. Okay, so.
Okay, good evening. So the, tonight, we are going to present to the second interim budget update. Every year, the local educational agency are required to file two interim reports during fiscal year. The first one that, starting the ending period of October 31st, 2012, and the second one is the periods start, not start, but ending at January 31st, 2023. And tonight, we're going to present the second interim budget update on our self-financial, the actual financial, January 31st. The purpose of the second interim budget report is to inform the board, the public, and the interest agency of the district current general fund financial status, and to notify the County Office of Education and the State Department of Education whether or not it will be able to meet its financial obligation. As you can see above there, tonight, we're going to present to the board the positive certification for this current year and two subsequent years. Next slide, please. So let's start with the, our general fund revenue. Our total general, general fund revenue for 2022, 23 is projected to be $170 million. And as you can see, the biggest portion of this revenue is the LCFF funding, the local funding, local control funding formula. This is the state fund based on the number of eight average daily attendance. That's the biggest portion that I tried to focus on. And the other portion, we have from the federal and the state and other local, as well as transfer in. So, so, so those are the additional source of funding to make up the $170 million as total. Let me pass it on to Shani for the next slide.
Good evening, Board and everyone else. I'll go over the next few slides. The next one is general fund expenditures. The total second interim general fund expenditures is $177 million. Majority of it, about 75% of it goes to salary and benefits. The rest, 13%, goes to book and supplies. 9% goes to operating, other operating costs, including like contract services, insurance, utilities, professional services, and the remaining goes to other outgo and uses. That mainly include the payment to special ed county program and to metro ed. Next slide. This slide are listed the major changes in revenue compared to first interim. Comparing to the first interim, our revenue increased by $12.3 million. And this $12.3 million increase mainly consists of restricted grants that we received from the state and local. So that includes $5 million in learning, recovery, emergency block grants, 3.1 in arts, music, and instructional block grants, 1.6 additional funding for ELOP Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, 959,000 from CalSHA grants, and 475,000 from San Jose State University Teacher Residence Expansion and Capacity Grants. So I want also to point out that among these grants, except ELOP, the other four are all one-time grants, and they are to use in multiple years. So we have right now, as in second interim, we budget the amounts we have seen so far. And, and any remaining balance, we will carry over to the next fiscal year. Next slide. So on here, this slide lists the major changes in expenditures. So 11.2 millions of it is from the restricted programs that I mentioned earlier, and 114,000 is increase in utility cost that due to increase in energy cost. And 280,000 increase in insurance premiums as a result of changing law back in 2020 that extended the statute limitation for childhood sexual assault against school and current and former employees. Next slide.
Do you have questions? Okay, just feel free if you have questions along the way, just.
No, I thank you for that, Wendy. I was just looking at that 280K increase in liability insurance because of the sexual, the extension of the sexual limitation. I'm not sure the governor knew when they made that happen, that what the cost of it was going to be to school districts, that we have to absorb somewhere, because they didn't give us funding for that. that we have to absorb somewhere because they didn't give us funding for that.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Unfortunately, when the Governor Newsom signed that into, uh, law, um, the consequence and, um, turn over to the district. Yeah, we will have to pay, um, additional premium in order to be covered, yeah.
Thank you for the questions. Next slide. Next slide highlights the, um, the, um, major things on the governor's proposed budgets. Number one, the, uh, state is experiencing slower economic growth in revenue compared to their initial projection in earlier of this school year. And their projected LCFF COLA is eight point one three percent for next school year. And the governors also proposed it a new equity multiplier to the LCFF formula. In terms of expenditures, purse rates further increased from twenty-five point two percent to twenty-seven percent. Stir rate remains flat at nineteen point ones, which is the same as current year. And the governors also proposed the proposition twenty-eights is additional funding to school for arts and music. So as a result, we also updated our multi-year projections to reflect the governor's, um, proposed budget. In here on the slide, you can see in multi-year projections, um, assumptions, the difference between first interim and second interim. So I want you to, um, uh, get your attention to the last two, uh, columns of, on this slide, I mean, last two right columns on this slide, um, which is two twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. In ADA, um, projections, we are reducing our ADA projections at us, as a result of current year ADA is lower than expected. The reasons that only changed the two out year is because, um, earlier this year, we have a change in law where it's using three years at higher years average. So it's not affecting the current year, but it's affecting the two out years. The COLA, um, percentage, we have update twenty-two, twenty-four, I mean, twenty-three, twenty-four to eight point one three percent. But I also want to point out that in twenty-four, twenty-five, the COLA is lower than first interim, um, projection. And under, um, undupicated pupil percentage, um, we have a slight increase as a result of current year undupicated pupil percentage increase. And, um, in terms of LCFF revenue, our two out year projected revenue has increased compared to first interim. It is because we've added transition, transitional kindergarten adds on to the LCFF calculation.
So you're saying transitional kindergarten is funded under this, under what we have here?
Mm-hmm, yes. This is a add-on to the LCFF formula. Yeah, it's about two point nine, I mean, two, two thousand nine hundred, around two thousand nine hundred dollars per TK ADA.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide. So this slide shows the, um, reserved fund balance compared to first interim. As a result of increase in LCFF revenue, we can see we have a higher, um, or increased it, um, Fund Seventeen Strategic Reserve Fund balance compared to first interim. It is because we needed to transfer less amount to balance the general fund budget from the Strategic Reserve Fund. And as for the building fund, um, you can see twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five increased it in fund balance as a result of increased, um, lease revenue and interest revenue. And as for current year.
Could you repeat that one more time, please?
Which one?
Um, about the building fund?
The building fund, the twenty-three, twenty-four two out year projection is increased, um, fund balance increased compared to first interim. The reason is our lease, um, revenue and interest revenue, um, projection is increased or expected, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions so far? So, um, next slide. So our staff recommends the board to accept the positive, a positive certification for this second interim report. And next, um, our Assistant Superintendent Wendy is going to close out this presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Shani. Thank you, Duke, to go over the slides. And, uh, just, yeah, please feel free to, uh, interrupt us for questions along the way. And I shared this slide during our last, uh, budget update in December. The, the blue line represents the pre-COVID enrollment projections from our demographer. The red line represents the current projection. You can see that in the year of twenty-two, twenty-three, which is the current year, there is a gap here. Since our funding, you heard from Shani and Duke, is still based on attendance. And the attendance is driven by enrollment. So we need a plan in place to address this funding loss. And some of the school, most of the school districts actually in our county have already encountered a similar problem in the past. And now I guess it's our turn to deal with this issue now. And you heard from our superintendent in her earlier report, we have, um, a virtual meeting tomorrow night to seek, uh, public input regarding the district budget priorities. So I would encourage you all participate and provide your input to help us to make, um, good decisions to set up our district budget priorities. Moving forward, here are some of the challenges that the school districts are facing. Slower economic, um, development in California and nationwide. Increase in labor and supply due to the inflation. And often, we will have to hire people to run programs. And with the cost increase in labor, and we will have to, uh, balance between our program needs and the cost. Based on the current situation, um, most likely deficit spending is unavoidable. So what we need to do as a district is we need to manage our deficit gap. So it does not grow out of control. So with that, we will end our presentation for tonight. We're currently working on develop the budget for next year, which is the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, school year. That means our second, uh, subsequent year will extend to twenty-five, twenty-six. And this is just a moving document, and then our budget process does not stop here tonight. And we'll continue to provide a budget update at a future board meeting.
Wendy, could you go back, um, one slide? Or could we go back one?
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we look at the twenty-two, twenty-three year where it was projected, we were supposed to be around ten-five.
Yeah, close to ten-five.
And we're actually around ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
So that's approximately five hundred students.
Yeah.
And five hundred students, we're at, we're at, is it nine thousand or eight thousand per year per student?
Oh, well, the five thousand, this is our enrollment. Our attendance, because funding is based on attendance, attendance rate is probably, uh, right now is about a ninety-four percent. And so five hundred, so basically the attendance, it may be four hundred fifty ADA roughly that we'll generate. So that's about four point five million.
Right, that's about.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're looking at, yeah, so what we're saying is that, um, we had, we also have, based on ADA, based on our demographers' projections, um, we expected to have four point five million more in our budget.
Yeah, based, uh, based on the pre-COVID projection, the blue line was the pre-COVID.
Uh-huh.
And because of the COVID, we lost enrollment. So basically, this create a funding gap. So we, we actually have a funding, uh, funding loss compared to our original previous projections.
Okay, thank you. Um, Superintendent, um, do, do we know if, um, or I think I want to have us look at, um, the city of Milpitas is, uh, have we lost people in the city of Milpitas? I think that's a question that we want to probably answer. Because if, if, uh, I know that was the, the demo, demographers' pre-COVID, um, um, projection and what the actuality of what we're dealing with. And Wendy had mentioned that we may be experiencing what other school districts are experiencing in the area in terms of, um, an exodus, uh, but I'm, I'm not sure if that's what we're experiencing in Milpitas and that's what this is, or we're losing our kids, um, potentially to other, um, to other entities, um, in the area.
So we have, uh, as Wendy pointed out, the current enrollment projection, and that was based on a revision by the demographer. The demographer submitted to me this week, uh, draft of his preliminary projections, uh, which he'll share with us at a board meeting, uh, later this spring. And he is indicating that we have a bubble in our kindergarten, excuse me, in our pre-K. And our kindergarten numbers are not what they had been projected to be. And it could be because, uh, they are going to other schools or they have moved out. So a question about if, um, Milpitas, the city of Milpitas has lost people as a whole, that would be one to find out. And then the other aspect too is that he points out that in his, uh, draft, that there is a development of about four hundred and twenty units, which is behind schedule. So that could potentially provide more students. But until he sees that that's in process, he's not including it in the numbers. And then there's another development that's proposed for Main Street that will be, uh, about two hundred and forty-five, uh, below market and at-market rate. And if that project does go on differentiation, that would also bring in some more students. But what he is seeing is that our TK population, uh, will increase, but the kindergarten population is not what it was expected to be.
Thank you. Um, questions from the board? Okay, um, we do not have any additional questions. Thank you from staff for, uh, the presentation. Obviously, there's work to be done. Um, as Assistant Superintendent Zhang had mentioned, we do have a cost management opportunity for community and others to participate tomorrow evening. And, um, I know that I'll be there, so I'm looking forward to that. And with that said, is there a motion?
Move to accept, uh.
Hold on, I apologize. Scott, any comments from the public?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the second interim report.
We have a motion to accept. Is there, uh, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, team. And thank you, Duke, as always, and thank you, Shani. Really appreciate it. Item. Business Services seventeen-three B. Approve the updated construction management services pool for measure AA bond projects, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Yes, you've probably noticed that we have a more participation tonight in audience here. So they're all patiently, and now they're getting excited now. This is, um, our item.
They don't look excited.
Yeah, they don't.
They look exhausted.
You see the smile on their face. Okay, so in January, uh, our facility team, uh, we, um, issued a request for, uh, construction management services qualification, we call RFQ. And our interim director, which is also our consultant from, um, N, the, from, uh, outside company, Neil, he facilitated the whole process. We received, um, thirteen proposals from, um, the companies in the area. And with the panel, we in, we selected six firms, uh, to conduct, uh, for an interview. And then from the six firms, tonight, I'm very excited and to share with the board that four out of the six were recommended for board approval to be our, um, construction, uh, management services pool down the road from our bond project. And we listed the four companies here. Just to be noted, there's no particular, like, sequence here is, um, because they're all equally valuable and important, and they are just, so the sequence is not like, uh, based on like a score of this. It's just, uh, we listed it here. So I'm just go, we have, um, representatives from each company here tonight. And they're waiting, and I think they're anxious to share with the board their company and their background. And so then we, the board can also know them. I'll just start one by one then, and I'm looking at the time. So maybe if you can briefly give, um, maybe one minute or two, the most, uh, quick introductions about your company. And the question, I know the board, we always like to hear, uh, working with some UPeters, um, what do, how you're going to support our district and our students down the road during our partnership. And we'll start with the JGM. So we have a representative, um, Mr. Toby Black here.
Good evening, everybody. My, my name is Toby Black. I'm, uh, representing the JGM Construction Management Team. Uh, JGM is a construction and architecture firm that's been around for forty years, uh, specializing in K through fourteen, K through twelve, uh, education construction projects throughout California. Uh, just to kind of keep this brief, some of the projects, uh, in school districts that we have worked in, LA CCD, LA USD, Oakland Unified, Fremont Unified, Santa Rosa Junior College, and, uh, San Jose City College. I just wanted to say thank you for, uh, giving us this opportunity. Um, and one of the things, as you had mentioned, how, uh, we support the students. Internships, we offer internships to, you know, uh, students of, to help bring in, to help educate with architecture and construction. And one of the things that we are currently doing with the students, uh, as we are, uh, working currently at San Jose City College, um, I'm putting together a solar project, um, for the Milpitas Extension in which we have been working with, uh, Carissa Scott and the principal at the, um, uh, Milpitas Unified, or Milpitas High School Middle College, and how we can incorporate that, uh, solar project into her curriculum for the dual enrollment, expanding dual enrollment, and in, uh, uh, creating environmental sustainability, uh, projects or sustainability courses for them. And so thank you.
We got a question?
Yeah, any question? Yeah, definitely. This is your, uh, chance to also ask some follow-up questions.
So how many employees are you, did you say?
How many employees are JGM?
Yeah.
I think we're around forty.
Okay, forty. You've been in the business for forty years?
Yes.
And you offer internship? Okay, that sounds great.
Any other questions? Ballpark number of internships that you've already conducted?
Uh, so far in Northern California, two, but we offer as many as we can possibly do.
Well, just in general, you don't have to just do Northern California?
Oh, no, in general, uh, I think we've got internships, um, through, for LA CCD specifically. Uh, we like to bring students in to, you know, work with us. And it isn't, when we, when we have interns, whatnot, when we bring them in, it isn't just, you know, hey, you're going to be doing copies, this and that. We actually get the interns involved in the projects along with the construction managers in all of our meetings. Uh, so they know what's going on and how, uh, we conduct business and how, you know, so they can see what's going on with the projects and how the business really works with architecture and construction as well. So we make sure that all the interns actually get really involved into the projects.
How many years you've been doing internships?
Uh, from, I'm newer to, to the firm, but as far as I know, I think they've been doing it for, is, I would say almost from the start, um, the owner, the original owner of, of JGM, he's been involved in, uh, education, especially with YMCA. he's been involved in, uh, education, especially with the YMCA, um, as well as, uh, he's put together, um, uh, some programs down, down south to help, you know, students and, and the communities around there.
So there's a curriculum and if we went to your website or things like that, we would be able to see some of that stuff?
Uh, I cannot tell you that, but I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
But we do offer, we, we work with, uh, all districts. When, when this comes up, we let them know that if you have, if you have students that are interested, bring them by. And we will bring them in and talk to them and see what they're looking for and try to help accommodate them. Any other questions?
Um, what experience do you have with building sustainability and efficiency such as LEED?
LEED?
Yeah.
Uh, currently we are, um, putting a, we have a, is it a four-story, one hundred and eighty-eight million dollar career education, uh, complex that we're currently doing at San Jose City College. Uh, that is, we're putting it to, trying to get it to LEED Platinum, uh, certification. And all of that comes down to, uh, construction waste. Uh, what products we are using to be, to put in, to be installed into the building, meaning building products from JIP boards, using, um, recyclable materials, uh, energy efficiency, uh, meaning with commissioning along with the, uh, the HVAC systems and how efficient that can be to the project and how that can actually give back. Uh, we are currently, uh, putting solar in, um, with, uh, I'm just doing mainly specifically San Jose City College. That's the closest where we're doing this. Um, we're doing a solar project at the college itself to, uh, uh, at the, uh, student, uh, I can't.
It's late, I understand.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, parking lot, excuse me.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, where, uh, the solar, uh, canopies over the entire student parking lot to help actually bring that in. And that's actually going to give us LEED points for our career education complex as well. And one of the projects, reason how I'm doing the solar project at the extension is because of this other larger solar project we did at the, uh, parking lot, we had, we removed the solar panels from scope of one of our other buildings. And so we're using those panels to actually put the solar install at the extension as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Toby. Okay, are we ready for the next company? Okay, and the next one, we have Van Pelt, uh, Van Pelt. And we have Mike Pelt and Eric? Mark, okay, Mark and Mike. You're brothers, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Last time I checked. Good evening. Uh, thank you so much for having us here. I'm here with my brother Mike Van Pelt. We're the two founders of Van Pelt Construction Services, which we've shortened to VPCS over the years. Next month, in April, we're celebrating our twenty-fifth anniversary in business for Van Pelt Construction Services. Mike and I go back forty-four years in the construction business and all we've ever worked on is K-12 public schools. The first job we worked on, I was a laborer. Mike was a carpenter, was a Oakland, uh, middle school in Oakland. So I won't, I don't want to tell you the year because you'll calculate and figure out how old we are. Um, we're in twenty-four school districts surrounding the Bay Area. As I mentioned, that's all we do is K-12 education, public works, construction projects. Um, we do have a summer interim program over the years. Many, many kids come in similar to, uh, the previous gentleman. We have them more than just, um, doing administrative work. My goal is to teach them how to do cost estimating, how to read drawings, you know, how to be functional in the business. We've, uh, we also do some fund scholarships. Right now up in Cloverdale, we're doing, uh, the student board members, if they have a perfect attendance record, they get a scholarship for fifteen hundred dollars. Um, just things like that. We pick out throughout, uh, K-12, we have, uh, even at the kindergarten level, we'll put portholes in the, the construction wall so they can look through. And then we'll put pictures of the different equipment with the names so they can guess which names the equipment is. So we try to have an interactive process. We also do environmental workshops with the kids. Right now over at, um, Terreton Linda High School, we're doing an environmental workshop where the students are participating and designing, um, a solar, a solar project. Um, let me see what else do I have here. I think that's about it. Um, we're in surrounding school districts, uh, we're Eastside Junior High School District. We're in, um, uh, Alum Rock, Pleasanton, and then we kind of circle the bay.
Did you guys kind of rock, paper, scissors to see who was going to stand up?
Yeah, he, he drove, so I- Usually people ask if we're twins and I, I get really upset about that. But yeah, any questions?
Uh, no question, but just, uh, quickly, actually I'm alumni at Terreton Linda High School. That's, uh, my alma mater.
Oh, is that right?
It was an odd coincidence. So, uh, appreciate the, the space that you're working with and the scholarships and the internship opportunities. Um, just curious as far as the learning spaces that you are constructing. And, and what is, what is your philosophy with that?
Well, I think, um, form follows function, right? You get in with so many architects want to design a building, you know, for their either brochure or they want to build their building. We like to make sure that we build your building. You know, like I said, form follows functions. You know, we build STEAM projects all over the Bay Area. Um, and I forgot to mention, we like to bring the kids in during design as well. Uh, let them be participants. That way when the thing's being built, they have some ownership, uh, and they can brag about the projects that they sat in the design meetings and then they get to see a complete fruition. So, um, yeah, we love to, to see, you know, we're up to date on, you know, all of your programs. You know, we adapted your school district. Milpitas sets a level of excellence we saw tonight. We're excited to fit in with the fabric of your district and become part of the family.
All right, thank you.
Other question? How many, how many from your, how many, how many years you've been in existence?
Twenty-five.
Um, from your, you mentioned you've got summer programs you guys have been involved with in a while. Have you hired any of the students that you've engaged with over the course of the years?
Oh, yeah. We've sent them off to college. We've helped them through college and then brought them back as, uh, long-term employees.
Which college?
Well, Hayward State, uh, Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo. There are two that are currently working for us.
Cal Poly is a big one in construction.
Yeah, and Chico, sorry.
Yep, and Hayward, they both are.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you for mentioning those.
Sorry, and how many employees did you say you have?
We have forty project managers plus support staff. Yeah, fifty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are here, we're going to make it worth your time. We're not, you know what I mean?
No, no.
We're gonna, we're gonna do our thing.
He has the two founders here, so we're employee one and two.
Okay, all right, awesome. Thank you. Does the cabinet, um, have any questions? Superintendent? Okay, awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have, uh, Strong Construction and we have, um, Randy and Jake. Your father and a son, right? Yeah.
Yes, we are. Hi, I'm Randy Strawn. I'm the founder of Strong Construction. We've been in school construction for over twenty years. I personally have been in, um, school construction for thirty-five. And we focus on schools, uh, we do some municipality work as well. And, uh, we do have interns that we've, probably three or four projects to where we've hired them. This summer, we're going to hire probably six more for Santa Clara Unified School District, another district that we do CM work in. And, uh, um, what else?
Our local, or, you know, our head office is about, you know, ten, fifteen minutes away from here.
Also, I would say that one thing is that we do, not only do we do construction management, but we do general contracting as well. And I think that gives us an intimate relationship with subcontractors and what current workloads are and, and, and pricing as far as like during the design, when you're trying to develop, if you can meet your budget. I think we, we have a, a strong understanding of that because of our relationship, because we are general contractors as well as construction managers.
So I do have a question for you. Uh, with the way that we've experienced the escalation in prices for various supplies as well as labor, what are you finding currently in the realm of either lease, leaseback or, um, bid processes? As, in other words, which are you finding is benefiting the property owner?
As far as lease, leaseback versus-
Versus bid at the, with this climate of construction that we have going on?
I think that, um, I feel it just at least with lease, leaseback, it, it usually does end up costing the district additional funds because of the competition that, you know, um, they do usually get three numbers, but, you know, we go out to, to, you know, like six or seven subcontractors and it's more competitive. And, um, so I, I think that the district gets a better, you know, economically, it's, it's, it's more beneficial to the district to, um, to put these things multiple prime out to bid.
So you said in addition to, uh, construction management, you also do construction as a, uh, excuse me? So as a general construction company, have you ever done a lease, leaseback?
We have, yeah, multiple times.
Okay, thank you.
What was your best project and why? Might be two different answers. Might, might be two different answers. So we have to go with the senior, no, no offense, but you gotta go with the senior.
Up in Manal Oathredin, we did a, um, a science wing that, um, I just, I thought it was a beautiful building. And it was, um, you know, uh, aesthetically, I thought it was a beautiful building. It was a difficult, it was kind of centered in the, in the center of the campus, but, um, we were able to, uh, get it done and I thought it was a beautiful building. Go ahead, which one's you?
Uh, you know, I'd probably say my first. It was a, you know, a portable job for Campbell Union School District, but just working with an architect, working with a school, seeing it come together. I mean, it wasn't, you know, a main academic building. They leased it out and, you know, brought in revenue for the district. But, you know, just, you know, working with schools, working with school districts, I feel, you know, that's just what we do.
Is that with the Campbell Elementary School District or High School District?
Uh, elementary.
So is that the building that's, uh, around the middle school campus?
Uh, this was Forest Hill Elementary School.
Okay, thanks.
So how, how many employees do you have?
We have around thirty-five.
And then how many projects do you normally have, you know, going on at the same time?
Uh, we normally have, you know, roughly around eight or nine.
Thank you.
Uh, roughly, uh, what's your percentage of staying on schedule with your construction projects?
Oh, we're, we've never not been on schedule. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, man, come on, man. Yeah, yeah. Come on now.
Uh, that's a really hard question. Um, there's a lot of different reasons why something would, you know, not be on schedule, just depending. But we always do our best. We do whatever it takes, especially as a, you know, agency, construction manager. That's our whole, our whole entire existence is to, to prevent that, stay ahead of time, you know, and finish the job on schedule.
And, uh, you know, we have, you know, I mean, we maintain the schedule. Obviously, you know, weekly, we have OAC meetings to where we're reviewing the contractor, you know, the subcontractors or the general contractors, three-week schedule to make sure it's tying into the master schedule so you can identify if there's a problem early. Because the sooner you identify it, you can make corrections and, um, because obviously if it, if it goes too far, then it just snowballs and gets worse.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for the tough question.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions or?
Oh, please, oh, please, sir. Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now are we ready for TBK? And we have a Travis Kirk here. TBK, yeah.
Hi, good evening, Board President Norwood, members of the board and Executive Cabinet. Uh, thank you for selecting our firm as one of the, one of the, uh, firms for your pool for construction management services. I'm here tonight, uh, as the President and CEO of TBK Construction Management, along with my amazing wife Bonnie, who you have met, who co-owns the business and is also a nineteen ninety-one graduate of Milpitas High School. A little bit about my background. My background is, is perhaps a little different in that I started in the construction industry as a laborer, worked my way up carpenter, superintendent, worked on a lot of school projects for a large contracting firm out of Fresno and became a licensed general contractor myself. And then I worked into being a consultant for a small school district up in Groveland, uh, to run a small bond measure that they had passed there. They wanted someone with the hands-on expertise who actually knew how to build something, uh, physically themselves to run their programs. And that's how I got into school facilities. And there I moved on to Merced Union High School District, where I was Director of Facility for six years, then on to Cupertino Union, where I was Director of Facilities for three years. And in my time here, I, I realized there was a need in the construction management industry, particularly in the South Bay. There's a lot of schoolwork going on and I felt like, um, we should go back into business, um, in the construction management rather than being a Director of Facilities. Um, so we opened our business about five years ago. We took on some small projects while I was still an employee of Cupertino Union. And then nearly four years ago, we had this incredible opportunity to come up here in Milpitas Unified, where we were fortunate enough to be selected, uh, to do some program management for this district. And along the way, as you're aware, we've, we've, we've collaborated. We have embraced the culture of we. We have made some bold decisions. You all have made some bold decisions with, with regard to things like the design of the Innovation Campus, um, early procurement of long lead items, steel and storefront glass, electrical components, HVAC components. Being aware of these things that trigger cost escalation and schedule delays, you all have made some bold decisions to award such things ahead of time. And that's really kind of driven our schedules back and tightened our schedules. Because right now, uh, hesitation is escalation, is what I say right now. And with these bold decisions, we've really cut down the timeline of construction. And when you're seeing, uh, double-digit escalation year in, year out, and you're building something like a Folia Building at Innovation Campus, it really compresses the time. You've saved money, you've been visionary, you've been bold. And I'm proud that I've been invited to speak at CASBO, uh, next month. And this is the topic we'll discuss. And I'm fortunate to use, uh, Milpitas Unified as a case study. Um, we also do work, a similar work now for Fremont Union High School District. Um, so we're happy to be over there. Uh, it's interesting, there's a lot of the same players, a lot of the same architects and a lot of same contractors. So, uh, we're over there in that district as well. Um, back to my, uh, history. I'm also a graduate of the Cache Facility Leadership Academy and I also do construction litigation uh, for construction defect and construction claims as a retained expert. What else? Mostly we just want to thank you for the opportunity. Uh, this is Silicon Valley. This is the, the land of startups. And a lot of our foundation, uh, for our company, uh, we don't have like these gentlemen, thirty-five or forty employees. We don't really ever want to get that big. I think we'll probably cap it at ten or fifteen. Um, we have two now. We have two on deck. Should we be fortunate enough to get, uh, additional work in any of the districts that we're, uh, servicing currently. But we really want to thank you to, for helping us lay the foundation for our startup and for us to be able to provide excellent service and really, um, bring on new people and train them in that same manner to provide excellent service. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, I'm going to ask the same questions, like how, how many internships and?
Well, we're not big enough to have internships yet, but we do have an idea that, for me and my background, I, I grew up very, very poor and I went to college for a year and ran out of money and so I entered the trades, right? And I always joke with people and say, you know, the, the trades are like Denny's at three in the morning. You didn't make a decision and that's what's open. And so, uh, but I've made a really good career of it. So my heart is in seeing these kids that want to go into trade unions. And, and I've spoken to the kids at Milpitas High via Zoom, um, in my capacity here. And my idea is to offer tool scholarships. These kids are going to go into the trades and if you, and we're connecting them with David Binney and the Trades Council and all that. Where I want them to get this passion and understand that the trades are a great opportunity to come right out of high school into an internship. A lot of these kids may not have, uh, the money. Get the tools. the tool bag, get the nails, get your wire snipped, whatever trade you're going into, whether it be plumbing or electrical or, uh, carpentry or the operating engineers or even the laborers' union. So we would, we would, you know, at our capacity, probably be better fit at this point to offer, um, tool scholarships. And that's kind of near and dear to my heart. Now, that's not to say we couldn't bring in internships and we've arranged tours of the Innovation Campus already. We're speaking to students. I interact with Carl and, and we can set up things there to do that. Um, but be happy to bring some people on as we can and are capable of doing. Absolutely.
So you mentioned how you tackle master plan schedule, you know, what, to that point, what, what do you foresee as future challenges here in the district?
Uh, early procurement of long lead items. We still have, uh, impacts of a worldwide pandemic. We have unprecedented, uh, inflation currently. Um, so it's really looking forward. It's, um, looking forward to say, what are those things you can procure early, um, which has saved us in this district a ton of money by doing that. Actually using the Folia as an example, since the Folia was a pre-checked building, which means the structure itself is pre-approved by D S A. And this, and this district was bold enough to say, that's the structure we want on our site. Two things happened. One is a very much abbreviated schedule because it's a P C drawing. The four buildings we're building now, sixty-five, sixty-six thousand square feet, has zero structural comments from D S A. None. The biggest problem we had was access compliance comments. That's unheard of. Just, it's just unheard of for that much square footage. And so you have this abbreviated approval time. You have an abbreviated construction time. And then you also have the ability to have literally no risk to say, well, let's buy the steel early. We're gonna have this contractor coming on. Let's buy the steel six months early, get it coming. They can put it in the yard and have it ready. And you see how quick it went from having a concrete slab to now being, they're putting stucco on E N F right now. So that's one thing. The way I drive schedule and hold people accountable is very, very easy. The, the contractor prior to start of work is supposed to, has to, is required to provide a critical path method schedule. That critical path method schedule links tasks. Step one, demo. Step two, dig your footings. Step three, rebar, concrete, walls, roof, et cetera, linking, right? So if an event, an act, error, omission of the architect or the district or his agents triggers a delay in those linked activities, then the contractor is then warranted some delay time for their critical path schedule. However, if say the design team is short on getting an R F I, Request for Information Response, back to the contractor on irrigation that's down the road and doesn't link those activities, then they're not obligated extra time. So what you do each week is you take the three-week look ahead, and I think Randy touched on this a little bit. You take the, the three-week look ahead and you compare it to that C P M schedule every single week. And you go, okay, you were supposed to be stuck going, building E today. And I see that you're not stuck going building E. You're two days out still. How are you gonna recover that? Because there's no excusable delay. So you push that. That's how you drive the schedule, drive the schedule, drive the schedule. And secondarily, um, very accurate, detailed daily reports. What's the temperature? Who's on site? What subs are on site? How many people are there? What are they doing? Because you're building a contemporaneous record of events for every single job. So you could go back and read the book of these daily reports and understand what happened. And that's, and that keeps them on schedule.
Yeah, I want to be thoughtful of the time that we've shared, um, with each of the different. I know that you're very passionate about the work, um, and as, as are each of these individuals. I think I want to ask one final question. And that question for me is that, um, when it comes to the different projects that we're gonna have in Milpitas Unified School District, um, when would it be potentially best to select you, um, for a project versus one of the companies that have, um, a longer history in the industry?
Uh, as soon as possible, just because escalation.
Oh, ma'am. So you said select as soon as possible, but I mean comparatively, like, when would it be better to go with, uh, a firm that has longer experience and a history in the industry versus where you are in your startup phase?
Right, right. I think that, uh, no, I don't know how they staff their companies, but my experience has been, um, you know, some of the larger companies, not these gentlemen here, that I've dealt with, they're only as good as the employee they assign to the project. So that's where I've, I've shied away from some of the larger project, or larger companies. And in fact, in Cupertino, we had a C M firm there, a large C M firm, but they would send you employees that don't know what an I R is. They don't know what D S A is. They really don't know school construction. And so, um, we're, what we're doing is building a team of experts and I'm the accountable party. I'll never be big enough to where you don't see me and that I'm not involved in the daily activities. And so that's, I think, the upside to our company.
And the upside to their company is?
Uh, well, they can come to an R F P and say, we've done three billion dollars of construction management and we're in a, a, a lot of school districts, this sort of thing. So they have more history. So thus, with more history comes more projects completed, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, sure.
More, more relationships, um, those types of things.
Sure. Yeah, I know. I, I don't know, uh, the Van Pelt's, but I know that they're, they're, they're deep into, in the Bay Area. You hear their name all the time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So tonight we're asking the board to approve this, uh, C M, uh, services list.
Are there any comments from the public? Scott?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, I'd like to add one item for additional discussion. I'd like to thank Wendy for, um, want, first of all, thank you all for coming out and, uh, seeing who we are as far as M U S D and how we put kids first. And, um, we have a variety of questions and a variety of board members and we're very involved and we want to see what's going on because it's the residents taxpayer or it's our taxpayer dollars in the city that's making things happen. And so the fact that you, each of, you have equity stake in the organizations that, um, you work for, um, except for my young man right there, uh, who's kind of new with the firm. We really appreciate the quality of people that have come out to share with us, our organization. Um, we'll, we'll be looking for when the, when your, when your name is called or if your name is called, we'll definitely be looking for, um, that conversation around how our students will be involved, how will they will get an opportunity to get hands-on and then, um, how it moves forward. And I may, uh, at some point, one of the board members at some point may follow up on some of the questions that we have about internships and experiences and visiting your websites in a bit more detail now that we've had this conversation, uh, so that, um, we can understand who we're dealing with and how we'll be able to move forward to support our kids. So with that, uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight.
Item three B, um, approve the updated constr-
No, no.
No, we did that one. Um, item-
Four.
For Superintendent's Office, adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dot twenty-nine, recognizing and honoring March as National Women's History Month.
Scott?
Uh, yeah, for this particular, uh, resolution, um, we got, uh, the M H S Girls Who Code, um, to produce the video. I had, uh, they did it all themselves. So let's hear what they had to say.
Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas in Milpitas and Santa Clara County, inspiring women have made a difference and paved the way for other women in their respective fields, such as City of Milpitas' Mayor Carmen Montano, Vice Mayor Evelyn Chua, and City Councilmember Han Lan, School Board Trustees Kellye Chuan and Anun Nakah, Supervisor Cindy Chavez, Susan Ellenberg and Sylvia Arenas, and County Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mary and the one, and?
Whereas Milpitas Unified School District maintains strong woman leadership with Superintendent Cheryl Jordan, Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zing, Executive Directors Brittany Johari and Mary Drew Thorpinghaus, as well as Principal Hannah Azret, Jackie Bo Felbinger, Nicole Klein, Kristen Prolo, Claudia Cadenas, Nancy Pass, Lori Armino, Parwinder Johal, Deanna Sainton, Carissa Scott, Trangirla Mia Ramsey, and Giuliana Brahman.
Whereas throughout the U S, strong women have garnered a special place in our history, such as Kamala Harris, the first woman and woman of color to serve the Vice President, Michelle Obama, the first African-American First Lady, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, the youngest woman to serve in Congress, Harriet Tubman, best known for ushering slaves to freedom through the Underground Railroad, Amelia Earhart, the first female aviator to fly across the Atlantic, Rosa Parks, who helped launch the Civil Rights Movement, Sandra Day O'Connor, the first female Supreme Court Justice who served twenty-four years, tennis great Billie Jean King, who beat Bobby Riggs in the Battle of the Sexists, Sally Ride, the first American woman in space, U S Rep Nancy Pelosi, the first female Speaker of the House, and the list goes on.
Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movements, such as the Women's Suffrage Movement, Need to Movement, March for Our Lives, and the Women's March. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, also the emancipation movement, the industrial movement, the civil rights movement, climate change, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. American women have served our country courageously in the military, such as four-star General Anne A. Dunwoodie and Grace Hopper, who had a destroyer named after her, as was, as was the Cray X E six Hopper Supercomputer.
Whereas the rights of women have been challenged throughout history, culminating in legislation such as the nineteen twenty, the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution is ratified, ensuring the right of women to vote. In nineteen sixty-three, President John F. Kennedy signed into law the Equal Pay Act prohibiting sex-based wage discrimination between men and women performing the same job in the same workplace. In nineteen sixty-four, President Lyndon B. Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act into law, title seven bans employment discrimination based on race, religion, national origin, or sex. In nineteen ninety-four, President Bill Clinton signed the Violence Against Women Act, providing funding for programs that help victims of domestic violence, rape, sexual assault, stalking, and other gender-related violence. And in twenty thirteen, the U S military removes a ban against women serving in combat positions.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Milpitas Unified School District that March is designated as Women's History Month.
Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three by the following vote.
Scott, are there any additional comments from the public?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Any additional discussion? We have a lot of women in the district. Uh, we're proud of all of, uh, the work that they do on a continuous basis. Um, and with that, um, I, we recognize this motion and Women's History Month. Motion process, resolution is now adopted. Superintendent's Office, item B, adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dot twenty-seven, declaring the week of March nineteenth to the twenty-fifth as Adult Education Week.
This one was produced, uh, wholly by our adult ed staff. So go ahead and play that one. Thank you, Scott.
The mission of adult education is to support our school district and community. Our work aligns with M U S D's strategic goal number one, to build a culture of we, strengthening as we work through the challenges.
Adult education cast is networked to involve a large variety of groups, putting the two bookend of education.
We continue providing access to education, to adult learners, including the most vulnerable population, the men and women incarcerated. Adult education is a proud school, part of M U S D.
Whereas the first recorded audio education class in California was Harris Cattaro in San Francisco in eighteen fifty-six.
The class is authorized by the San Francisco Board of Education to teach English to Irish, Irish, Italian and Chinese-American.
John Swick, who was the first voluntary teacher for the class, later we come at the state superintendent from the public instruction.
Whereas adult schools have been called upon on numerous occasions to assist the state as it dealt with significant social, political, and economic issues. Examples included, jobs training programs during the Great Depression, training skilled and underskilled work, works during World War Two, in preparing millions of presidents for citizenship.
Whereas adult education in California overcame its biggest challenge as a result of severe economic crisis facing both the state and the nation in two thousand eight to two thousand nine. Funding that was previously reserved for adult education was redistributed to other levels of education in the state, resulting in many adult school decreasing in size and some closing.
Whereas Milpitas Adult Education successfully serves the surrounding communities through its collaboration with its community college partners and community-based organization through the California Adult Education Programs.
Milpitas Adult Education has served around four fifty-nine students in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Whereas Milpitas Adult Education provides significant and varied classes and programs to serve the surrounding communities, including class categories outlined in A B one oh four.
This includes providing supplemental instruction and support for high school seniors to meet, uh, graduations requirements.
Whereas Milpitas Adult Education serves students in the high school diploma and H U C programs. In the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the program is a continuum for those who didn't complete a high school diploma during their school years.
Whereas Milpitas Adults Education serves students in the English as a second language P S L program in the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
And parents enrolled, uh, in E S M classes learn how to assist their children with schoolwork and dedicate several hours, uh, a year tutoring their own children.
Whereas Milpitas Adult Education provide A U S D high school seniors and juniors with the opportunity to participate in the supplemental credit recovery programs.
The instructional support assists them in meeting graduation requirements.
In the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we have served ninety learners.
Whereas Milpitas Adult Education co-has one of the largest adult education correction programs in the state of California, in Santa Clara County, at M Wood, a correctional facility for men and women in Milpitas Major and the Green Tree Resource Center, and?
Whereas the Milpitas Adults Education has have reduced the precedivism.
Whereas Milpitas Adult Education provides a self-
Involvement for is students free from-
Discrimination or bullying.
Regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status.
Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Milpitas Unified School District strongly supports adult education as an important part of the Milpitas Unified School District.
Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the Milpitas Unified School District do hereby proclaim March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three through March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three as Adult Education Week in the Milpitas Unified- Unified School District, and salute the students and staff of Milpitas Adult Education and honor their efforts and accomplishments throughout the week so stated.
Wow, that was effort. That was a lot, a lot of different voices, a lot of different skill levels. That was incredible. Thank, definitely have to thank Giuliana and the team and all the students that participated. And with that said, is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? And Scott, are there any public comments?
No public comment at this time.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, consent items. Consent items are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by the Board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the Board staff or public request specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Are there any items to be tabled, removed for discussion or correction? Seeing, seeing none, is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent item.
We have a motion to approve the consent item. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Are there any comments from the public?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item 19, dates of future board meetings, March 28, tentative. Study session 5:00 PM, tentative closed session 6:00 PM, open session 7:00 PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Randall Elementary Road Language School, 1300 Edsel Drive, April 18. Tentative, study session 5:00 PM, closed session 6:00 PM, open session 7:00 PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube at Randall Elementary School. Any additional announcements or reminders from the Board?
Yeah, the Chamber, Milpitas Chamber of Commerce will be having their annual craft feed on April the 14th from 5:30 to 9:30. And you can start buying tickets this week. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Are there any other updates?
Yeah, so for the March 28 meeting, I'll be out of town at a work conference, so I will not be available for the board meeting. And in addition, this Saturday, there's several events happening in Milpitas. There is potentially the Little League Opening Day, weather permitting. And then Senator Wahab has a Women's History Month celebration at the San Jose City College Extension.
Awesome. I would also like to take, take this time and offer a moment of silence for our fellow colleague, Robert Young, for what has occurred in his life this week with the passing of his beloved wife of many, many years. So at this time, I would like for us to have a moment of silence. Thank you. We're with you, Rob, your family. As always, thank you for all that you've done for the many, many years of support of MUSD. And we know that oftentimes behind, with every strong man, there is a strong or even stronger woman. And we know that she cared deeply for you and all the work that you did. And she will be sorely missed as a member of our community. And we, we have your back and take the time that you need to take care of yourself and your family. We'll hold it down till you return. And with that?